Hi Abby.
Hi guys.
Ms. DiMolina.
How's it going?
How are you?
Oh fantastic, how are you? Hi Leslie. I see Megan in the background.
Hello Leslie.
Hello.
So is Juliet down for a nap Abby, or do you have a in the cut somewhere?
She is sitting in her little chair.
Oh.
She just woke up from a nap unfortunately.
God Dave, won't be too long before she's running for the planning board.
Imagine how old we'll be then John, if we're still alive.
Ah, yeah. I think we'll be in the realms of, well I will be in the realms of, do you remember that guy?
Dave will be a great grandpa.
Guys, can you hear us?
Wow, you guys.
Yes.
Okay, alright, we're gonna start the meeting.
Okay.
We actually started and you guys can talk. Okay.
I'm just ignoring Joe today.
Just today?
Okay, welcome to the February 6, 2005, 2025, sorry, uh, planning board meeting. This meeting is audio and video recorded, all votes be conducted via roll call because John and Dave are on Zoom. Zoom attendees must use their real name to help with accurate minutes. The chair will recognize participants and let them know when they can speak. Please mute yourself when you are not speaking if online. Public speakers will be granted three minutes and an additional minute thereafter. Um, okay, we're gonna go through roll call, Nat. Here, aye. Dave.
Here, aye.
John.
Here.
Aye.
Uh, Leslie Snell.
Here.
Megan Trudell.
Here.
Uh, just arriving is Barry Rector.
Here.
Thank you, and Catherine Rosero. And Mr., and, and our alternates, Harold Matts. Abby DiMolina. Oh now she's quiet.
You're muted Abby, changing a diaper, leave her alone.
Okay. And Stephen is not in, Stephen Welsh, double, okay. Um, okay, moving on, so roll call, approval of the agenda please.
So moved, second.
Okay, uh, I believe that was John on your motion.
Aye.
John, uh, Nat.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Barry.
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye, okay. Uh, moving on to public comment for items not on the agenda, anyone? And I don't have my computer today, so if you could keep me up, thank you.
The staff report is different than the agenda a little bit, so we.
Okay.
The agenda. So the first thing we have is to discuss Article 82 of the, um, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. This article is to accept the Massachusetts General Law Seasonal Communities designation.
Okay.
Okay, so, i-if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Um, this isn't a zoning article per se, um, but it is to accept the designation as a seasonal community, and there are some components of zoning that go along with that designation that we will be required to comply with. Um, right now, the specific requirements aren't super clear because there hasn't been guidance issued by the seasonal communities advisory council advisory committee. Um, so that will be forthcoming at some point, uh, but it is really important for the community to, you know, consider this legislation, there's a lot of attainable and year-round housing benefits. Um, there are other benefits for year-round property owners in terms of taxes, there's, uh, financing things for the town to do for, um, year-round and seasonal housing that are beneficial. So, we put this on the agenda at the request of, um, the FinCom and I think probably town administration as well, to see if the planning board would vote to support the article. So it won't be your motion printed, it's the finance committee, um, but they would like to hear if you support the concept.
And I might add, um, you know, a-aside from the immediate benefits and the somewhat unknown of potential zoning implications, i-it's also really important, um, because it gives us the seat at the table. So, you know, I'm the planning commission's representative on that council and, you know, i-it'll help shape the regulations and guidance that are gonna be coming out in the future. So we wanna, we wanna retain the ability to have, to have a voice and, and help shape the outcome.
Agreed.
Yes.
Alright, does anyone have any comments, as I always mention?
Just a little bit, okay, so, um, staff. We need to be all in, meaning the town. Well, uh, the select board, the planning board and the FinCom, in my opinion. This is one of those kinda situations where one confusing question turns into a big problem, okay? The unknown, this isn't like something that, I mean, we have the whole issue with the fourth dwelling and all that, and all that, but this is overall, we, we need to be part of this. It's just a question of sifting out all the fine print and cleaning it up and making it work for Nantucket. And that message is the most important message of the whole entire thing. Th-this isn't something that's being forced down our throat in the sense of like beyond what we already have, and that's what we're, we're fixing that. And that, that has to get explained, so that's all I'm saying. I, without question, think we have to approve this and, and, you know, give it a positive and all that. But the explanation of it, sorta like the new boats at the steamship, you have to have an explanation of things that are complicated, so, that's, and I know you already know all this, I'm just saying it for the record. So, that, is this a public, no, so?
No.
Okay. Yep. Uh, Mr. Iverson.
Yeah, I, um, and I don't mean this to, to, uh, you know, I fully support this, but I think it would be helpful to have a cheat sheet, um, for the board, for the public, for everyone about what exactly we're buying into here. I mean, I think that it's all positive, but I think that if we're gonna sell it, we need to have those facts to Nat's point.
True.
You know, pretty well sealed up and, um, and give us the opportunity to, uh, defend this and fight for it at, on the floor of town meeting when, if need be.
Leslie.
Uh, I'll just add, there's some, some really clear guidance, um, from the state summarizing it, which we'll get to everyone. Uh, but town council is finalizing a memo that he's going to give to the finance committee for their meeting on Monday. So I'll be sure to get that out to the planning board members for their review as well, so that you have the same information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Do we, do we wanna wait on that to take a vote, or does nothing? Okay.
Okay.
No? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Make a motion to give a positive recommendation.
Okay, uh, Nat, on your motion.
Aye.
Barry.
Aye.
Uh, Dave.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye, okay. Uh, do I wanna jump back up to the, um, disco?
No, so that's gonna be on the agenda for Monday.
Oh.
Yep, so, yep, so for today, we go right into the open space parcels. Do you have Monday's agenda?
Yes.
Are you reading, no, are you reading?
Yo, you looking at the one thing.
You're looking at Monday's agenda.
Oh Joe, Joe, this, that, you know what, they almost got me on the same thing that happened to you. You gotta look at the.
I said it was from Monday.
They almost got me too, Joe.
Not me.
No.
They go all my notes.
That one.
Looks the same, but it's not.
Yep. Is that Monday? No, that's Monday, just go off of this one. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so we're on open space parcels. Um, and it's been recent past practice for the planning board to sponsor articles where the, um, land bank and other conservation organizations have acquired, um, parcels and we put those in the least, the least dense zoning district available based on the overlay. Um, this year, I had to get these submitted to the warrant before I had a chance to meet with the director of the land bank. We have had a meeting, um, and, you know, at this time, they may want to retain the flexibility to have some of these units be employee housing, um, which would render this non-conforming. So my suggestion at this time is to actually take no action on this article and we can bring it back in some form, um, at a future town meeting if and when appropriate.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or anything?
Second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye.
And I'll make a motion at this point that we take no action on this one.
Second.
I thought we.
What?
Okay. Okay, so Barry, any motion?
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Nat.
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye, okay. Perfect. Alright, moving on to zoning bylaw amendment cottage community.
Yep, so this one, and the public hearing is still open for this, um, but at this time, staff recommends that you all proceed with a take no action vote. And we can include a comment for your consideration at our March 6 meeting. Um, you know, after hearing feedback from the public hearings, having the master plan in progress, the build-out analysis almost finalized, dealing with, um, zoning articles for ADUs, the still unknown of the regulations of the seasonal communities, there's just a lot of things going on right now that will ultimately drive policy. So, um, our thought is we should press pause on this and we can revisit once, you know, some of, some of these things have, have guidance and, and conclusions and can drive that process.
So would you, so take no action now.
Yep.
But maybe go to the special town meeting possibly?
Yeah, that might be a little premature.
Yeah, I'm just curious, just my own.
I mean, we have so many other pieces that are coming to us from the state that are in a way achieving some of the things that this was meant to achieve.
Yeah.
I think let's kinda get those sorted out first.
Okay.
And then we'll regroup if necessary.
Okay, perfect. Uh, commissioners, any comments or anything? We're good? Okay.
Good.
Almost public, anyone? Cool.
Motion to close the public hearing then.
Second. Second.
Barry, any motion?
Uh, aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye.
And I'll make a motion at this point, we'll take no action on this.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye. Okay, moving on to zoning bylaw amendment accessory dwelling units.
Okay, let me get this on screen share, the next series of articles are in relation to the Affordable Homes Act and the ADU regulations. Um, these were all drafted based upon the original regulations that were in draft form that were sent out, I, I don't know, right around the holidays. Um, and the regulations were updated just last week, uh, Friday. So, some of these recommended motions include language changes and concepts that weren't available in the first round that are slightly different now. So, we can go through those as we, um, go through each article individually. So the first one is accessory dwellings. Uh, what this article does is it replaces our existing accessory dwelling definition. Um, that existing definition functions more of an in-law suite type of setup. It does not mirror the state definition. This proposed definition mirrors state language, um, with the size requirements. Initially, the regulations required that municipalities allow for multiple ADUs via special permit. The updated regulations, um, require that mean, that only happen if municipalities opt in, so it's not a requirement, it's now an option. So our recommendation is, at this time, is to accept the updated definition, but to not opt in to the special permit allowance. Um, and that's what this does. It also makes the appropriate changes in the use chart based upon the language. So accessory dwelling units are allowed in any zoning district that allows for a single-family home.
So I have to take two votes on that, sounds like?
Yes, we have to open the public hearing.
Yeah.
Oh, two votes on the, the motion once we get there?
Yeah, the definite.
No, we can take one vote, well, depending on how, what you want to do, I should say that.
Alright, um, uh, commissioners, any comments? Not hearing any, anyone in the public? No, anyone? Yeah, sorry, I forgot. Billy's not here.
No, no one.
Okay.
There are no public comments online.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public comment?
So moved, sir.
Barry, second, anyone?
Second.
Nat? Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Uh, Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye. Okay, thoughts, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion at this point that we send this off with a positive recommendation to town meeting.
Second.
May I add with the, with the amended motion as suggested, correct?
Yes, thank you.
That was two-thirds.
One of them, right? Yep.
Yes, this is a two-thirds.
Okay. So Barry made a motion?
Yep, aye.
And Nat, would you the second, okay. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye, okay, thank you guys. Alright, moving on to zoning amendment, um, zoning bylaw amendment principal dwelling.
Okay, so this is another definition that has come out of the regulations. The, um, the regulations contemplate a principal dwelling on the same lot as an ADU, so for that reason, that term should be entered into our zoning bylaw as well, for clarity. Um, and there were no substantive language changes from the article as originally presented, um, to this adjusted motion.
Okay. Alright, commissioners, comments? Okay, not hearing any in the public?
Motion to close the public hearing then.
Very much, I can check.
Let me just double check, sorry.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, yep, no one, no one online.
Okay, Barry's made a motion.
Yep, so.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Uh, Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Okay, um, thoughts, and we'll need a quantum vote of two-thirds, please.
Correct, so we'll make a motion at this point that we give this a positive recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
The chair is an aye, okay, perfect. Alright, moving on to zoning bylaw amendment protect, protected use of an ADU.
So again, this is a new term to be inserted into the zoning bylaw that is a defined term in the regulations. Um, this clarifies what, I guess the, the first part clarified what an ADU is, this clarifies what is, um, protected as an ADU. There were some non-substantive language changes included in the update that are included in this updated motion.
Alright, commissioners, any comments? From the public?
Motion then to close the public hearing, sir.
Okay, uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye, okay, this is gonna need a quantum vote of two-thirds.
Two-thirds, yeah. Make a motion at this point that, uh, we give this a positive recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye, okay. Moving on to, um, zoning bylaw amendment dwelling units.
Okay, so this is also a change out of the ADU regulations. This replaces our existing definition with the state-approved definition. Um, it functions in the same manner, and there were no changes to the language from what was originally drafted in the warrant.
Perfect, okay, commissioners, what's? Not hearing any, anyone in the public?
Darla Stuckey?
Darla Stuckey, welcome.
Thank you, I just have maybe a stupid question on all these ADUs. Is an ADU something that can be sold to a separate family if you put one on your lot?
We're gonna have Leslie Snell answer that.
I think that's still open to some legal interpretation, it's not in the guidance that was provided by the state, and it's not something that we can regulate through zoning, so we'll have to see how that works out.
Okay. Does that help, Mrs. Stuckey?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Motion to close the public hearing then.
Thank you, Barry.
What, oh, no, whoa, yeah, whoa.
Just, uh, and, just real quick, um, I just wanted to make sure Mrs. Stuckey knows that, that these are addressing new state laws, and so that's why we can't give you a straight answer. It's not, it's not that we're creating something and we don't know the answer for it, but that these are, these are state, this is state legislation that we're all still trying to, to come to terms with.
Thanks Dave, was thinking something like that.
Barry made a motion.
So I'm back to, let's close the public hearing then, please.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye, sorry.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye, okay.
Then there's a motion to give this a positive recommendation, please.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye, okay, thank you, alright. Moving on to zoning bylaw amendment year-round housing.
So year-round housing is not actually a part of the ADU regulations. This is a new term to be inserted into our zoning bylaw and it mirrors the definition that the Affordable Housing Trust uses, and it also mirrors the definition that the seasonal, um, communities designation uses.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any comments, thoughts?
Nothing to add.
Okay, nothing to add, anyone in the public? I don't see anyone.
Motion to close the public hearing then again, sir.
Thank you, Barry, can I get a second?
Second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye, okay, we need a quantum two-thirds vote, please.
Yes, motion to for a positive recommendation.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye, okay, thank you. Alright, moving on to zoning bylaw amendment temporary moratorium on tertiary dwellings.
Okay, yep, so temporary moratorium on tertiary dwellings. Um, because the accessory dwelling unit that is now required by the state is essentially the same as our tertiary dwelling provision. Um, the restrictions are a little different, the state allowance is less restrictive than the tertiary dwelling allowance. Um, we're proposing a temporary moratorium until December 31st that would give us time to think a little more thoughtfully about how to, uh, maybe address our existing tertiary dwelling definition, do we need to keep it? Do we need to make changes, are there other provisions of the zoning bylaw that may need to be changed? Um, we just need some time to think all of that through. Um, with the accessory dwelling unit, um, you're allowed that by right, regardless of how many other dwelling units are already on the property. So if the temporary moratorium for tertiary dwellings doesn't pass in the event someone already had a primary, secondary, and tertiary dwelling constructed, they would be able to construct a fourth dwelling unit under the ADU provision. So this is just putting a halt to that while we do some investigating and figure out how to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Hold on with the explanation.
Yeah. Couple more pieces though.
Yeah. Couple layers.
Can I ask Megan, because she's the one that's taking Billy's place here? Can you see if that Mrs. Stuckey lady is still on the thing, you know, the? Okay, so can you hear me, Mrs. Stuckey, I'm sorry to just like call you, but you're on Zoom, you're not.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. This article is kind of partial to what you asked earlier, and it's related to it. And I want you to fully understand all this, since you're interested. So, staff, I just have to ask one thing though. We technically now can't have a tertiary covenant through the ADU third dwelling, correct?
The ADU would not be subject to a covenant.
It can't be.
Cannot be.
Yep, and that, right there, is what made my head blow off when this all started. Because we've worked really hard to get to that next step with the zoning allow, with the bylaw allowing for larger, the 900, if it's a covenant. And then all of a sudden, this happens, so, um, hopefully, this can get solved by the end of the year. So we don't lose that. You know, it's the highest place in the world to build a house is Nantucket. So, like, this is kind of like setting back something really good even further for, just because of this issue, and, and it's right, we have to do this only because of what the state did, until we get it clear. So I just want that to be understood by the lady that got on earlier, Mrs. Stuckey. Okay?
Thank you, thank you.
You could probably clean up what I said, Leslie, but I think I'm right.
Well, I, I just want to add and get a little plug-in that Nantucket has been very progressive in their housing allowances, we are ahead of most of the state. And we've had some very innovative approaches. We've had some very innovative approaches to providing middle-income housing, to providing affordable, uh, lower-income, deed-restricted housing, and unfortunately, other communities have not been, um, as strategic. They haven't been as open to having multiple dwelling units on properties. And so, that's why the legislature has taken this approach to add the accessory dwelling units in 40A Section 3, which is an exemption to many of your local zoning requirements. So, yes, we've done a really great job here. This is, in ways, counterproductive to our tertiary dwelling provision. Um, but it's something that we're gonna have to live with and we're gonna have to figure out how to move forward.
Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, what was that, anyone in the public, anyone else we could?
I can't hear Barry at all. Barry, is your mic on?
Sorry, there we go, let's try that.
Thank you.
Uh, no problem, my pleasure. So, the moratorium could be reversed or earlier by a vote of town meeting if we were able to get this clarified? Let's say by a time of a special town meeting, or is that just a, a one and done? We're, we're committed to that date no matter what?
Well, so, the date that's in the article is December 31st would be the expiration.
Correct.
Um, town, the special town meeting could certainly consider striking the moratorium and ending it as of the date of town meeting.
Yep.
Um, if we don't have everything figured out to our satisfaction, leading into the special, or lead, well, yeah, leading into the special. or lead, well, yeah, leading into the special, we could propose an article to extend it further.
Correct.
To give more time, so there's options. Or just let it expire on December 31st.
Okay.
And just to add, December 31st of next year is really prime advertising time for spring town meeting. So if it needed to extend further, we have clear indication at that point. So we have to keep in mind, while November sounds very far off, the preparation is gonna begin as soon, if not before, this town meeting concludes.
Right, but as I said, my primary question is, can that moratorium be basically, instead of extending it, shortening it? Because I think as some more clarity comes into place, this may not be need to be out to December 31st. But for the moment, that's a good set of guardrails. Thank you.
I will just add one more thing on this. I think would be helpful with this is, this town council needs to be... If they working on this, is this a town council thing specific or what are we doing? Working on the confusion between, you know, the ADU of the seasonal communities versus tertiary.
Well, we haven't quite gotten there yet. We've had a lot of other things on our plate, but we identified this as a potential density issue that we may want to at least temporarily mitigate while we pause and take time to think about it.
I'm just hoping that we don't need to have special legislation in Boston for Nantucket out of 350 on towns and cities.
So Megan and I have been working very closely with Amy Quessell at KMP Law and we will continue to do so while we go through our bylaw. And this may take several town meeting sessions to really get through all the implications because our bylaw is complicated. We have a lot of provisions and this doesn't really meld well with some of our provisions. So we're gonna have to, you know, iron it out. But we'll continue working with town council to look for solutions.
And maybe providing updates once in a while.
Yes.
And through select board, you know, could people watch their meetings? Like, this is, this is a big deal and wants people to understand what is happening. And it's unfortunate because we already fixed this, like, and now we have to fix it. You know what I mean? Okay, so motion to, anyone else on? We good? So I mean, is anyone else?
All right, is anyone in the public? Want to speak? Anyone online? Okay, Matt?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Matt, any motion?
Um, aye, sorry.
Barry? Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chairs, an aye. We need a quantum vote of two-thirds. Anyone?
Make a motion to give a positive recommendation.
Okay, Matt, on your motion?
Aye.
Barry? Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay, and the acting chairs, an aye, okay. Uh, moving on to zoning bylaw amendment, pickleball. Oh, boy. Yeah, let's, let's get, yeah.
We're gonna screen share the, uh... The concept that we talked about internally. Okay, so instead of the prohibition in all zoning districts, at the last meeting you all talked about us coming up with a different option. So the option that we've talked about that we think makes a lot of sense is to continue to prohibit pickleball courts as proposed in the smaller districts and to allow them by special permit in the half-acre and larger districts and in the commercial districts. So that's one option. The other option that we've talked about is to wait on this. We've heard several concerns that there are easy ways to work around this by, you know, constructing a different type of court and not calling it a pickleball court by continuing to play pickleball. So it may not quite achieve what, what we were originally trying to do. So, you know, if the board wants to wait and think this through a little bit more, that's an option. Or you can really talk about other things as well because that's why we wrote the article as strictly as we did as a prohibition. So you would have flexibility to, you know, do less restrictive things.
Back off of it.
Right. But if I could add, it's specific to the term pickleball so that you don't have the latitude to extend that to game courts in general.
That's the one.
Yeah, so you can't, you cannot extend this to game court. That would be out of the scope. So it's specific to the term pickleball.
Right, okay.
If you were to move forward with some sort of concept of this.
All right, commissioners, and thus? Go to the public, anyone? All right, while we're waiting for Jill, Dave, do you want to go ahead?
Sure, um, yeah. As important as this is, I think, for us to, to do and to get right, I hate to put it off, but I think maybe that that might be the best thing, right? Because I, there's so many workarounds and I think really that what we're gonna have to do is regulate game courts in general and not just pickleball courts. But I also don't want to get in a position where all of a sudden we're regulating some kid who wants to put a basketball up on his garage, right? Like, so I, I think that, that we need to be thoughtful and I think that the answer is, is setbacks instead of straight-out ban. And so, yeah, that's kind of where my head's at. So I'm just, I think we might be better off, even though I think this is important and I think that it's addressing what could be a real issue in neighborhoods. But we also need to get it right because we, you know, we don't want to regulate away people's rights to, you know, hit a tennis ball against their side wall, even though it'll drive their parents crazy, or putting a basketball court up at their garage. So that's my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jill, welcome.
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I just, I appreciate that and I appreciate that you might move into the sport court regulation. I hear that now. But I, and I've said this to a number of times, what the annoying part of pickleball, and it is annoying, is it's the repetitive sound of the ball on the paddle. The ball hitting the ground is not annoying. You can't hear that. It's a very light ball, it's like a wiffle ball, you know? So I just want to caution you on the sport court, too, because you're talking badminton and volleyball and hockey and there's a new game called spec tennis. I did order and I hit the foam balls, which is a kind of like a pickleball and I played around with that and it's actually pretty good and it is totally quiet. I mean, maybe we can even have some sort of message to the public if you have that in a residential zone to encourage the use of those balls because I think it's a really new product on the market that people don't know about. But, you know, I just wanted to make sure that if you're shifting to a regulation on sport court, I still don't think it's addressing the issue of noise.
No, and I think you brought up a lot of good points and that's, I think, one reason why...
Thank you, sorry, I...
No, no, it was, no, it was, I'm glad.
But, you know, for the record, I want everybody to go to NRIS to play anyway.
Thank you, all right. Okay, uh, Dawn?
I appreciate what Dave said about putting this...
Name for the record.
Oh, it's Dawn Holgate. I appreciate what Dave said about putting this off. I, I mean, my, my initial feeling on this is it's a really slippery slope that maybe started with an initial ban and, and regulations of pools. And I very much, it resonated with me, the basketball hoop on the garage because that's my son's sport and it's annoying. The drum set in the garage could be annoying. There's just, there's so many things that are like healthy family activities and I really hate to see us continuing to regulate that through zoning when it's really a neighborhood noise kind of issue on just an island that's become more populated. So, yeah, I, I mean, I, I understand where it's coming from, but where does it end? And I just, I think that you have to be a lot, a lot more thoughtful before continuing down this road. So I'd really like to see you not take any action on this.
Okay, thank you, Dawn.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the public? Okay, let's see, and this is... Barry, please go.
I like what you did. It, it's common sense at this point. Now, the special permit granting authority would be the ZBA in this particular case, correct? Okay. This, I think, makes sense to go with, all right? Let's, let's go back to game courts. Things like basketball courts, you know, people using places to play outdoor hockey, whatever, have not drawn in any way, shape, or form any real comment from the public. There's been really no feedback. This one triggered a lot of things and I think that, just going through the information, boy, they were right, that, that ball hitting that paddle and the frequency is probably the most annoying frequency there is. And I think you're seeing that happen by virtue of how people are reacting to this thing. Personally, I think this would be the way to go because, here we go, we can, given that it's gonna be in larger zones, the fact that each property has some very unique qualities to it and there are ways to deal with it, plus the fact that it would be a special permit. So if it wasn't working out, it could be reopened. I think this makes the most sense, to give it a try, let's see how it works and begin to fine-tune it out from there. It will be a bit of a learning curve, but the, the special permit fortunately also gives us that ability to be able to learn from anything that we may have made a mistake on, in any way, shape, or form. But this idea that we're just gonna keep continuously banning things as well, too, or as Matt likes to call it, "ban tucket", that's gonna go down in your legacy one day, sir. Anyways, I, I'd much prefer if we, we went this route at the moment and begin to understand what that's gonna look like over time and at least present that as a viable solution in town meeting as opposed to an outright no. Because I think moving this to a no or moratorium of some type, what are you gonna learn from that? Probably absolutely nothing. And the other thing, too, is that like most other things, as Joe was saying as well, the sport may just disappear on its own and get morphed into something else over time. We don't know. And again, technology is changing behind it, too, recognizing that we're not the only one who don't particularly like the sound of this thing. I think it's worth a try, I really do. I think it's a happy, happy, reasonable compromise and just everything that we've been dealing with so far.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Anyone else?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with David Iverson for a couple of reasons. Listening to Jill and doing some reading, the, I'd say, technology around pickleball, it is changing, quieter balls and all this. And so I think we would learn something by waiting. So I, I, that's my first point. I would support Mr. Iverson's recommendation to wait. The other thing is, I do not like the idea of special permits. I, I think in this case, we are gonna open ourselves up to all kinds of legal issues about what, what we approve to, to whom and why that there and not here. And I, I just think this isn't the ideal use of special permits. So my, my vote will be to follow Mr. Iverson's direction. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And then, talk to, do you want to speak? Yeah, just, I'm gonna kind of, I'm gonna agree with that, too. But I just want to ask about the setbacks in location issues, which has nothing to do with special permit. Is that going to be clean, clear in the permitting of these or the construction of these or however you look at it through the HDC? I mean, it can't just be, it can go anywhere. It has to be able to have a location, somewhat to coping, patios, all that kind of stuff.
So right now, they can be built right up to the setback line, just like any other structure.
Yeah.
If they were subject to a special permit, imposing additional setbacks could be something that the special permit granting authority considers. The special permit granting authority could apply other conditions like screening, noise mitigation, no exterior lighting, you know, those kinds of things, you're familiar. But without a special permit provision, if they're allowed by right, then...
There isn't anything beyond an actual setback.
Which is...
So the way we... The way we, I forgot now exactly how it's worded, what the pools in the small zoning districts. We have like an extra five feet on the side, yeah, it's, I don't know what it is. There's something in there about a little beyond. And I think that that's, you know, a good idea for the, for the, you know, smaller districts, but I don't think we're ready yet. It's, we're not ready for that right this minute. That's not clean enough, it hasn't been vetted enough. But I think that that smaller pool, plunge pool in that are, wasn't it above? I'm trying to think about the deal, was it above 7,500 square, or below 7,500 or above 7,500? I forgot what it was. But we have something in there about that. I just can't remember exactly how it's worded. And I'm like, that's the, what was my original thought in this, in the smaller districts is to have a way to have it, you know, but you have to have a special permit to do that. It can't be just automatically in the building code or in the, the HDC can't require that, or can they? See, that's where, it'd be easier if we could get that to work without it being another layer of regulation, is what I'm trying to say.
Did you have something technically you want to bring in, otherwise I...
I just want to answer something for Matt.
Pardon?
I wanted to answer one of Matt's questions about the HDC.
I, I, yeah, I want to clarify that, too, because that's why I was asking, who's gonna be the special permit granting authority? That's gonna be the ZBA.
The, the ZBA would be the special permit granting authority.
Correct, so the HDC really falls out of that equation in terms of dealing with that particular aspect. And one of the things, right? Because it would still have to go before the ZBA for that pickleball.
I think two things are getting mixed up.
All right, please, go right ahead.
Two things are getting mixed up. So any exterior architectural, I'm saying any, any exterior architectural feature requires review by the HDC. So they're reviewing it for the architectural components, the hardscape, that sort of thing. So that's step one. They can't impose the types of conditions that the zoning board can impose. So, so that's a different layer of review. If it was before the zoning board, that's who could impose additional setbacks. That's who could impose screening. That's who could impose all of those things that, you know, during the course of planning board review, you apply to projects.
So to follow up on that, that's again why I'm saying the special permit to me makes a lot more sense as opposed to saying, okay, we're gonna require this, this, and this. That's trying to shoehorn everything into one particular set of parameters. Whereas the special permit gives you far more latitude to be able to look at the site itself and what surrounds it and begin to make a little bit more sense about what do we need to do on that particular site. If two of the four areas meet up on like the state forest or something, then not so bad maybe to deal with. If all four sides are surrounded by, you know, if all three sides are surrounded by, by dwellings, then again, you may have to apply a very different set of parameters to it. And there, to me, is, is, that's why the special permit, to me, kind of holds very value to it, is to be able to fine-tune it to that particular property. And as I said, too, if you didn't quite get it right on the first try or the neighbors still disagree with it, there's an opportunity to go back in it and see if we can additionally fine-tune it. And I think initially, for something like this, you'd have to have that level of flexibility for it to be able to work, so. So, that's my two cents. Did you wanna say something?
Leslie just
As far as reopening the special permit, I mean, that's something that the planning board traditionally puts in their decisions for commercial
Right.
or, you know, impacts, but putting that in a residential application, where they've already constructed a, a use for their personal enjoyment's a little bit different. And I don't think the board would have the same level of latitude.
And I believe that's called ass off, right? Under law?
So
It is.
Well, we can talk about that.
Yeah, I think that, that needs a little bit more sorting out.
But, but I do, one second. But I, but this was, what we're talking about now was a contentious topic at the HCC. And I think that's why we're taking it to this level, to this board, and to the ZBA, and that's why we're here, so. Howard, you wanna go ahead?
Uh, yeah, I, I just wanna ask Leslie a question. I'm, I wonder why you're leaning toward a special permit when in fact you could create prescriptions under the zoning to generally make some requirements of what's acceptable, what's not acceptable as far as the location from other people particularly? And then leave open the door, if you chose to, to impose other issues, if in fact, the, the planning board or the zoning board decided to do that. But I think that, I'm wondering why, that, why that that's an easy administrative thing to do? And I also wonder whether that opens us up to arbitrary and capricious in a big way.
So, through you, Mr. Chair. We could do that. We can't do what you've described during, within the scope of this article. Because the article was written in such a way that we can't now add a bunch of new information. So if you want to, say, for instance, take no action on it, we could work on, you know, writing it in a different way for a different town meeting. But we can't do that within the scope
I, I, I understand, thank you for the clarification. But I, I was in the, after this ultimately is worked on further and refined, I'm, I wonder why a special permit approach, if in fact we're able to come up with a formal prescription for this, to make this refined is necessary versus having a stated set of requirements?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, hold on one second. I just feel like every lot, like when I'm designing houses, it is unique to that. The, the parameters, the site configuration, everything. So I just feel that if you did something prescriptive, I don't think it would work in every case, and that would, where you may get yourself in trouble. So, I, and I, you know, I'm not really looking to restrict everything, but I do think that this would need a review of every application per the site and its uniqueness. You know, if it's conservation next door, okay, you know, that's a really good change there. But at the same time, a wetland, if there's housing, I think that you gotta weigh in everything. And I don't think, to, from my seat, that I could write anything, or anyone could really write anything to make sure you cover all bases, that someone's gonna find a loophole, or there's gonna be a loophole, or something along that lines.
Are you not concerned about these constantly being litigated?
I don't think they'll be constantly litigated, but I think there'll be maybe a couple. And I think that that's just something we have to deal with personally. So, um, you, well said. Okay, Dave?
Yeah, I, listen, I, I'm, that's part of the reason why I, I favor us continuing this to, to maybe special town meeting. I personally feel that this all could be resolved with some thoughtful setback numbers, instead of a ban, a special permit, that, that maybe we can just, you know, thoughtfully create some setback numbers that, you know, I guess in some smaller zoning districts, it would not allow them to have one. But I think that, that really the key is, that is, is in the, in the setbacks, where we can make sure that it's kept away from their neighbor's property, and it doesn't give an opportunity to push these courts into the, um, up into their neighbor's setback, or, or closer to their neighbor's setback than to their own house. And I think that would be an easier solution that wouldn't call for, for special permits, for, for additional steps. So, I don't, I'm not sure what the right answer is, but I, I do think that, that the setback is the key over the special permit. And I, I may be wrong, but that's, that's my feeling. And that's why I, I feel that we should, we should continue this on for special town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else?
I agree with all that.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Howard, for, um, your input. Thank you. Hi, Campbell, welcome.
Hi, y'all, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, awesome, thank you. I just, I, I've been listening to the conversation, obviously. And I, I get to putting it off, but a lot can happen between now and then. I know that when I, as you'll remember, when I tried to put the parameters, as Howard is mentioning, on pools, I, I believe one of the strongest arguments for the setbacks I was trying to create was that the irregularity of so many of the lots, as Joe was saying, comes into play so often that, you know, every, every lot's its own piece. And when I look at what you have proposed in this article, I guess I'm a little more with the special permit and starting sooner rather than later. I think that some of the areas, like the MMD, I think it's just important to get it in, that that's just a no, instead of, you know, opening the door for like, you know, the pools that we've had in the MMD issues, which I think is, was unfortunate and did end up in litigation. And over the years, when it comes to litigation, I've found that there are some people that just want what they want and have enough money to litigate it. And, and I'm not sure that a special permit or parameters, as was suggested, really stops them from doing that. But I just wanted to pipe up with, I sort, I, I do appreciate, and by putting the special permit in, as this is written here, it, that could be taken out at town meeting, right? Like if some, if, if the, because that would, that would loosen the scope versus restricting it more by trying to add special permit in at town meetings. So, just trying to think about options that voters would have at town meeting on this issue, 'cause some of them may actually have issues in these smaller districts and might approve something like this with the special permit. Anyway, just wanted to pipe up on that. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you, Campbell.
So I wholeheartedly agree with Dave on this.
I was agreeing with you, Howard.
See? Thank you. And, but I, I do think that you can, we can establish objective criteria that, that must be complied with, or give the person, the property owner, the right to come to the property, to the, to zoning or to, to us, and ask us for permission on a case-by-case basis for deviations based on their own special circumstances. And I do agree with Dave that if you create the setback amounts, that it will preclude on smaller lots in more densely populated areas, pickleball courts, naturally.
Yeah, I just, uh, Phil Grophy is here, but he brought up a really good point in looking at the lot that has a pickleball court, and trying to figure out, like, what would, you know, the setback? And, and I just kinda came to a standstill, and I'm like, that's where I kinda keep coming back to the special permit. So that was my investigation that I had done.
I, I think you might be able to address that, but I haven't really thought it through on percentages. You know, that it needs to be a certain percentage of the distance between the house and the property.
That was, yeah.
And, and then you can put a, a quantitative standard there as well. And I think you can have the right to overrule these, or modify them, or make them less stringent on a case-by-case basis as necessary.
Yeah, and that was something that I was looking at. Maybe it's not the side yard setback, maybe it's a distance from the house.
So it's the reverse of, it's the reverse of a special permit, it's a permission.
I kinda feel like we need, we need to vet this out a little bit more.
Yeah, I think so.
So, all right. All right. Anyone else in the public? Jill, please? Yeah, no, you're good.
It just occurs to me, if you leave in the special permit in that, then it kind of is indicating that might be what you're doing later, right? So I'm just, as a FinCom member, I'm just thinking about town meeting and how that might.
We can put something in the
Okay.
in the comments.
Thank you, Jill.
Is that, 'cause it's already in print, so we can do it in comments? Is that what she's talking about?
I'm not sure what you all are talking about. I, I thought you were leaning towards "take no action".
We are, but what, what Jill is saying is the way it's, the language is, I don't know, might give the wrong impression, but I, I, I don't. "Take no action" kinda kills it, so I don't think that's a problem. But we could, we need to have a comment though, I think too, of something that explains a little bit of what we've been doing.
Okay, we'll draft a comment, saying
Reflecting all this somehow.
Okay.
That's kinda why I was letting Jill speak, 'cause I figured something more to add, 'cause it sounds like, kinda
Okay, we'll draft a comment for you, for you to review it on March 6th.
Okay.
Based on your discussion.
One more time, Jill.
So I just wanna understand what's going in the warrant, 'cause what I saw in the packet, I didn't know if that's what's gonna go in the warrant with "take no action", or the original one that just was like a broad pickleball ban.
So, can't answer. So the original article will be printed in the warrant, and the planning board's motion will be to take no action.
Right, so it wouldn't be what was in the packet today. Gotcha, great, thank you.
Okay. Do we have the open public? Do we wanna keep it open?
No.
No?
I mean, unless there's somebody else to talk. All right.
Just a question, please. Can you just say? I'm sorry. So, taking no action with no a ball is no in the use charts, correct?
Yes.
I just, I'm getting a little fuzzy with the "take no action" versus
So, so the article is a proposal to include pickleball court in the use chart
Correct.
and to insert a no in all zoning districts.
Correct.
So by taking no action, that just goes away. It's not in the use chart now, we were proposing to add it, so it wouldn't be added if town meeting votes to take no action.
Correct, so basically just kinda re-listen flood rates again. Where can we have it anywhere? Okay, that's Yeah, I, I'm not sure that seems like the most prudent move either, listening to what the board's trying to accomplish here in one. So, you have you?
Well, may I?
Please.
Well, Barry, I think you have two choices. One is to rush to put something that's extraordinarily restrictive and obnoxious into the, as a recommendation for the town meeting. And the second is that we really should have acted on this and prepared it so that we could put something in there that would have addressed this, but we don't have that time. So the lesser of the two evils is which? Is to, is to be a total restrictor of the pickleball court and look like that you're Dr. No? Or to do the right thing and to put the right prescription in place when you're ready?
I, but I
Go ahead, do you wanna reply? Yeah, please.
I think the reverse of that, though, part of the reason why we put no in was just to slow the whole process down. And I think the moment you decide to take no action, then people can put a pickleball court in by right with no guardrails on it at all. And what you're going to see is everyone who wants to do this, you're gonna see that flood come in, just like we did at the pools, and/or other things where we've kinda stepped back a little bit from it. People decide, let me get it in now before anything else happens. So, I, I, I'd almost, as much as I hate to say that as well too, I think the most prudent thing to do is to give it a little more time to work it out, just for the moment, say no. And that can always be changed, even in a special time, even in a special time meeting, where we can hammer this thing out. But, like I said, to me, the most reasonable, again, I'm back to what I said earlier. I think the most reasonable is what staff initially proposed, which I think gives the highest degree of flexibility and latitude. But that's my opinion. Thank you.
Well, we're also talking about bringing this back March 6th, right? Maybe one, or did you, Zoe, okay, that's, I thought you were wondering, you said March 6th, and I was like, are we bringing this back?
That was for a comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
For you to staff, by its existence on the warrant as a zoning article, there's basically a ban till after town meeting, correct?
Until town meeting votes, yes.
Yeah. And then, with that said, what do the warrant articles do for the special town meeting? So it, it's, it's, and, and I'm just saying this because I, I, I 100% understand Barry's concern about a rush, but, but I don't, I mean, maybe the chair could, could better inform us on how many go through the HDC a year. I, I just don't think we're talking about huge numbers. And yes, it may lead us vulnerable for a little while, but not for a long period of time.
But the other thing, don't remember, Dave, is December, we were just talking about the advertising in December. And so I think that that would give us probably what, six, seven months of the same old, same old, until we could get that recraft it, get it right, include some extra language. And then once it's advertised, that would also put in the ban as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, I
Yeah, I mean, there's a, a couple of things, I guess, going on. So, if you vote to take no action, and town meeting votes to take no action, then we go back to where we were before the article was published. If there's a special town meeting, as is being discussed in the fall, I, there's not a timeline, you know, it, it has been discussed. So, it would probably be advertised sometime during the summer. So that would, if, if an article moved forward at a special. So there would just be a few months there, a window. Then, if nothing happened at the special, and you wanted to move something forward for the next annual, there would again only be about a month of time between the vote of the special and advertising for the annuals. So there's, you know, a, a few places where, you know, applications could be filed and permits could be obtained. But that's all speculative.
All right, so, that makes sense to everyone?
This is similar to what happened with Ritz's article four years ago. So, if this article was written, shall take effect upon passage, you wouldn't have this problem?
Zoning takes effect as soon as it's advertised, though, now.
I thought that there was a way that that could be avoided.
You can, but, yeah, but the article has to be written that way from the beginning.
That's what I, that's what I'm asking you. Yeah, okay, so we didn't think about that, but I mean, this hasn't even come up yet, this particular comment, if, on right now. Which just adds another layer of, you know, confusion. So, Howard's cut a couple of points there. If, if there was a way to get this setback issue fixed somehow without it having to require extra permitting, 'cause that's the problem I have, is like, this ZBA stuff is ridiculous if it's not something that rises to that level. But at the same time, when you start talking about, like, sep, uh, zoning districts with, say, a five yad, five foot side yard, or depending upon where it's gonna be placed, those kinda things are important. And that doesn't need to be that complicated. But, you know, I've learned a lot about pickleball in the last few, last month or so. I didn't know there was so many different ways to have the same court do other things. And it's like, this is way more confusing than a pool. A pool is a pool, right? Like, there's only so much you can do in a pool. But this is different than that. There's a lot going on, on these courts, that isn't necessarily noisy, or, you know, and like, that isn't necessarily noisy or, you know, and like, I, I do think we need to definitely, I'm in Dave's camp on this now, but I'm just saying, we need to learn about it. I mean, we need to be, you know, we're not pickleball experts. And here we got, you know, kind of, you know, it's not a citizen article. Usually this kind of stuff is coming from a citizen. That's another issue that was kind of hard to, and we're trying to get ahead of it. I get that, too. Like, like I said, I don't know when the meeting was, but when I said, should we have had like a pool article in 1986? You know what I mean? When there was eight swimming pools in Nantucket? You know what I mean? So it's, it's, you wouldn't have thought of it that way. I certainly wasn't thinking about pickleball as the, the new problem, you know, in the sense of like private residences. Because I see all the other things going on in people's yads. There's a lot going on in people's yads now that there never was. So I kind of put this in the same bucket as all the other activities that happen. And I think we need to have more input and, and cleaner answers and work with the people that know what they're talking about with this. So.
I think the other thing is also bringing it in the HTC, just kind of have them review whatever we write. And then also, I think Charlie Block, he was mentioned, I think, you know, so.
And, excuse me, but, you know, Nat, you bring up an important point, and that is that you could put a pickleball court on a tennis court, but right now you've restricted a pickleball court, but you haven't done anything for tennis courts. So, so you've just compounded the confusing nature of what you're trying to accomplish, because you haven't really accomplished anything.
I think that's called net sports or something like that now. I just learned that yesterday.
I can be a pronoun.
Never thought of it.
You want to go ahead?
So I'll make a motion to, is there anyone else? Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Give a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, John. Now, any motion?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Barry? To close in the public?
Yeah.
That's fine. All right, the chairs. Pleasure, the board?
Make a motion to take no action in this article.
Second.
With some comments, staff, of what we've done. Grieve.
Okay. Barry, any motion? Sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry. Now, any motion?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, it's a quantum vote of two thirds. The chairs and I as well. Okay. Staff, comments? Did you say Barry? Nat?
No, I meant the comments from, to have a comment in the, in the, in the warrant.
All right. Let's move forward. Okay, moving on to zoning map amendment, RC 2 to R5 or CTEC, Rosemary Way.
So this is part of the RC 2 phase out. We had a chance to discuss this internally. There was some conversation, CTEC versus R5. You know, at least this front property is being used residentially. R5 would keep the lot size conforming. So for those reasons, staff recommends a movement towards R5.
Did we talk to anyone?
We have not spoken to anyone. We have not connected. So. So an R5, a change to R5 would require a two thirds vote at town meeting.
Okay, Ms. I'm just trying to figure out. Okay. Anyone in the public? Not seeing any?
No.
I have the same thing.
Charles?
One more thing off of the RC 2 list. So as we identified, this is a very slow-going process, but once I make it's forward and steady, gets the ship here.
Nowhere to hide. All right.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing then.
Thank you, Barry.
Second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Acting chairs and I. Okay.
Make a motion that we make positive recommendation of this to change to R5.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Acting chairs and I. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to zoning map amendment, lug 2 to R20, a portion of 13 Woodland Drive, Mr. Mori. Welcome, Seeta.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the time that the board has given me and the neighbors to discuss this. I can't report that we have consensus, but we've had several lengthy and thoughtful discussions about, you know, what the potential impacts of these zoning changes would be. I think, I appreciate the order in which you called this, because I think this is Article 61, and I was going to ask you to bring this one up first. You all received by email and Art just passed me a physical copy of it, but I saw it on email also of an impact analysis that he put together for your review. It was just a few hours ago. And I know that you all have jobs and other things to do, so you may not have had a chance to pore over it, but I have. And it is a very helpful guide. There's a couple of, you know, minor math things that I would quibble with, but, but it's largely accurate and tells the story. But it tells a story and not the complete story. And I, and I want to add some additional context for your consideration. So 13 and 13A Woodland Drive together, including the portion that's already in R20, comprise nearly five acres. It's 4.8 acres of land. And when you compare that to all of the other lots which derive their frontage from Woodland Drive, it's about 86% as large. Okay, so let me say that another way. All of the lots that are colored in blue there around Woodland Drive total to 5.9 acres. And the 13 and 13A Woodland Drive properties are 4.8 acres. And so what Article 61 would do is allow this property to be treated exactly like the rest of all the other Woodland Drive properties. And in fact, it would still put it at somewhat of a disadvantage in, in terms of development potential, because it still would not be in the sewer district, which is something that I'm pursuing in other articles, but isn't, you know, part of what we're discussing here tonight. So these other properties, how were they developed? There's, there's 13 buildable lots. There's 14 dwellings. Two lots have two dwellings. And one lot is vacant. And so what that amounts to, if, if, what that amounts to right now is one, excuse me, 2.4 dwellings per acre, if they were built out to their maximum capacity, not suggesting that that's what the neighborhood wants to do, but it's available to them or future owners of the properties, that would be 6.6 dwellings per acre. Because of the amount of land area that would be required if the property we're discussing right now were to be divided, it would be, it would allow for fewer buildable lots and ultimately fewer dwellings per acre than the rest of Woodland Drive. Okay, so I don't know if that's, if that's very clear, but if, if Article 61 were to pass and this area shaded, bordered in red, were to be put into R20 to match the rest of Woodland Drive, that one lot could become five buildable lots. And there would be, there could then be a maximum of one dwelling for every 7,756 square feet. That is less density than would be available to the rest of Woodland Drive, which again has the benefit of being in the sewer district, albeit with a dry sewer line and it's, and it's not currently connected. So, you know, those are, those are some points. It's not, there's, there's a lot of detail here. At the last hearing about a month ago, it was requested that I send, sorry, I'm echoing here. It was requested that I send an analysis of what might be built under current zoning and what might be built under, you know, the maximum scenario. And, and I think it's important to realize that the maximum scenario, such as it is with Article 60 and 61 passing, would be 12 buildable lots, but we would still be limited by, by septic regulations. Septic regulations, which are more stringent than have been applied to the properties, the properties that have already been built on, on Woodland Drive, just by virtue of changing regulations over time. So assuming for a second that the properties are not connected to sewer, and that's, you know, another matter for other debates, there could be fewer bedrooms per acre on this, on this property than there already exists on the rest of Woodland Drive. And that's not accounting for the fact that there is a vacant lot. So that number's going to go higher. So basically, what this boils down to is taking a property which exists in two zoning districts, which is contrary to master planning, it's contrary to surfside area planning, and putting it all into one uniform district. The goal, as I've said since last fall, is that these properties will become year-round housing with price caps and things. I can't tonight make the commitment that that can definitely happen. I don't know that it can happen if the properties remain on septic. I can certainly tell you that it can't happen if the property remains on septic without subsidy from the Affordable Housing Trust or someone else. And so, you know, those are, those are all the facts. You have a, you have slides from a traffic study. You know, I'm happy to provide any additional context. In fact, we have somebody here, Dan from MDM Transportation, who can answer technical questions about the traffic analysis. I think, Megan, he may be on by phone, or I don't know if he's on as a viewer. He'd have to be promoted to a panelist if we wanted him. So I've got lots of notes and scribbles here, but I think I'll yield the floor and open for questions and allow other people to, to speak.
Thank you, Seaton. Go to the public. What do you have? Okay, we're going to go to Pat Tave first. Welcome, Patrick.
Thank you. Patrick Tave. When you guys make a recommendation, are you able to make a recommendation that the Housing Trust or help a developer do something like this so we don't have to change zoning, so we don't have to build 50 houses, so that he can make these units affordable with the help of their money? I mean, is that something you can do in a recommendation?
No.
I can answer that. So the planning board is not allowed to require that as a part of their recommendation. An article sponsor can grant any sort of deed restriction or, you know, something that may, you know, result in, to achieve their goal, but the planning board cannot require that. That's contract zoning. It has to be voluntary on behalf of the article sponsor.
Well, just so the board knows, we've had some good discussions with Stephen. Neighborhood has gotten together and done a couple Zoom meetings. And everyone in the neighborhood so far is in favor of what he's proposing as far as homes that will be accessible up to 240% of the area median income and restricted to stay in that price category. And, but none of the neighbors really want to see 36 or 40 houses in there. So I don't, I don't know that any of the neighbors yet have said, yeah, let's, let's change the zoning. So I would just ask you right now to not give a favorable recommendation for changing the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. All right. We want to run to Mary Lepard, please.
Hi, thank you so much.
Welcome.
So I just wanted to, I'm obviously against this article, and I live in the neighborhood. I won't say my address because it's already been publicly put out there. But I wanted, somebody spoke at the last meeting that we had about this, and they said that, oh, this will be just like Satium's Path. And that's actually incorrect. Satium's Path is about 10, okay, hold on, 10 acres, which, since it's Super Bowl week, is about 7.6 football fields, and there are 37 homes there. This property is 3.7, is 3.67 football fields. So I would say significantly smaller. And the proposal is to put as many houses or maybe more. I think in this fall, it was 40 houses. And with Cliff's property, it was going to be like 50 houses. So I just want you all to think about that density in a neighborhood where we are all against a dense neighborhood. We're not against affordable housing. I live in an affordable house. I live next to two churches. So it's not, you know, surfside, I think the surfside area has done a lot for affordable housing. And I just would like you to really think about this, is this what the community wants? Are we doing anything for affordable housing? I think affordable housing is wonderful, but I don't know that I would want to live in a home that is more dense than Satium's Path. I mean, I don't, that, these, these 40 homes on 3.67 football field seems like a lot. So I just would hope that you would really consider that this is not a good zoning change. And I think that there's probably a way to do it and maybe like make less money, but still do a really good thing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any more in the public? Steven. Yeah, Steven, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to respond to the, to what Mary had to say. The size of Satium's Path is about 7.2 acres, and there's 40 houses there. And what could be built here under the article that we're talking about, Article 60, if, if, if that zoning change were to be adopted, there could be nine buildable lots, and there could be three dwellings on each. And that would be 26 point, excuse me, it could be 27 dwellings. That's almost exactly the ratio at Satium's Path, which would be 26.67. Now, the homes at Satium's Path differ from the homes that I had proposed last year because they're larger, both in living area and height and ground cover. And so the total bedroom count per acre, even under the proposal that I put forward last year, would have been lower on a, yeah, bedrooms per acre for this site than it would have been. And this is, this is not that. This is not the same proposal. There's no scenario where any combination of passing Article 60 and 61 would yield 40 houses. Article 60 on its own could potentially yield 27 houses. And that would still be subject to sewer. I mean, you know, 31 bedrooms spread out over 27 houses, you just wouldn't build 27 houses if you had 31 bedrooms. So, so those are just some additional context.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board members?
May I?
Who? Art, welcome. Yeah, in a second, please. We're going to go to Art Spur on line.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, I'm juggling Concom meetings with your meetings. And so I'll be very brief. I think what's so important here, and I hope that the impact analysis, I will say that I do appreciate the discussions with, with Mr. Mori, but that, you know, whether it's sewer or not, the board, I believe, has to make its recommendation on what zoning will permit. And that would. And that would, you know, if we look at it directly from that perspective, it more than doubles what's allowed on the lot. I think looking at the piece of Woodland and the percentage of that is not really the best way to look at it from a zoning perspective. Because if you look to the south of that, you know, it is all Lug 2. And then you'd be sort of putting the piece of R2 over, R20, excuse me, into the Lug 2 area. So in the two lots along Skyline that both also have driveways onto Woodland, you know, are consistent with the way that this existing lot is. And as I quickly showed on the back of that, or of the handout that I provided, you know, I think it's important to remember that these are unmaintained roads. They're not plowed. And from a Planning Board perspective, to increase the zoning density is really where I hope that you would come at, looking at this from. And if there was going to be an agreement or a restriction that caused less houses or something like that, it's not in place right now. So what's really appropriate is a negative recommendation until there is some kind of binding, you know, restriction or agreement actually in place. And then you could flip possibly back to a positive. But to make a positive recommendation right now without that in place is really, I think, you know, you could sell the property the day after town meeting and, you know, do what zoning allows. And I think that's the way that the board hopefully will look at this. And then finally, from a zoning, you know, from a planning perspective, I think that the increase of dwelling units that could all be sold, again, this would open this up to potential flex up developments, 7,500 square foot lots, 30% ground cover on those lots, all being able to be sold fee simple. And that's, you know, you could get potentially a 20% bonus on the lots. That's how I came up with the flex potential of 11 lots instead of nine. It's not to say it's going to happen, but I think if you're going to support a zoning change like this, I think that's how you really have to look at this. So again, I appreciate your time. I understand these differing opinions here, and thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Art. Art Howard.
I'm sorry to interject, but Art, I totally agree with you. In fact, I thought, Megan, at one of the previous times when we heard Mr. Maury, we did ask him to tell us what could be built on the property within the current zoning. And that was the question that's still outstanding. So thanks, Art, for raising that.
I believe he maybe did include his analysis, was it 15 units? Stephen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to the mic. Welcome.
Thank you. Donna Marie Quinn Hedges. With all due respect to Mr. Rector and the board, we have had multiple meetings with Stephen via Zoom and also among ourselves. I feel we need to iron this out, perhaps more discussion. There is no concrete plan as of yet. Affordable housing, unless plenty of subsidies for Stephen's project, he would most likely walk away and sell. Also, this is not affordable. Financially, the numbers do not add up. What direction does the town want to go? And perhaps the Affordable Trust or Housing can look to put this money geared towards seniors? After all, they will continue to see yet more taxes increased. I think of Geraldine Stanley Amporo, a Nantucket native squeezed out. That is quite sad, yet no housing available for her. And she is the very fabric of this community. I urge you not to support this article right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I think I just sort of wanted to echo some of Art's points. I recognize that there's some other articles out there about sewer, and we don't know if those will move forward or not, and maybe these lots will remain septic. But I think that it is really important for the board to consider what is possible under existing zoning and the zoning that's being proposed when you're making your recommendation. And maybe there are funds to subsidize fewer lots. But as it stands right now, I think that it is really important for the board to look at it in that respect. And we certainly think that what is proposed and the potential for what could be constructed there without additional restrictions right now is too dense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emma. Okay. Dolis Stuckey, please.
Hi, thank you, thank you again. I don't have a lot to add, but I will participate in several conversations with Stephen and with our sort of neighborhood residents. And we did have productive conversations, but they were all premised on, you know, assuming that sewer doesn't pass. And so we find ourselves, you know, assuming 31 bedrooms, I think the community can live with some configuration of that on that property. And we, many of us, I think, or a few of us even said we would try to help him get subsidies from the Affordable Trust if there's anything we can do. However, we don't know what's going to happen to sewer. So as Ms. Molden just said, and I think Art Gasparo said, the way that the warrant is drafted now, we urge you to not recommend this.
Thank you. Okay. Dave, do you want to go first, please?
Sure. You know, first of all, thank you, Stephen. Thank you for Neighbors for engaging with each other and having a discussion. I think that that hopefully was productive. It sounds like at least you could sit down at a table and talk. And I, for one, truly appreciate that. For me, a lot of this hinges on on deed restrictions that Stephen's willing to do. And we can't base our decision on those. But I think that I, for one, would like to understand where we are with those deed restrictions and what Stephen's done or is willing to do. And if those deed restrictions are enforceable by the town or not, and what they accomplish. So I guess that's a question to Stephen through you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
So, thanks. So there were a set of deed restrictions which were recorded shortly before special town meeting. They were contingent upon a zoning change which didn't pass. And so there are no deed restrictions. My commitments have been that, subject to zoning change and sewer, that there would be a similar set of restrictions, hopefully bolstered by input from the neighborhood, from town council, from Planning Board. The goal is that these homes are priced attainably and restricted to year-round occupancy. There are other restrictions favoring certain professions and, you know, invaluable people to the community, which I hope to impose. In the neighborhood discussion, there was mention of a desire to keep the country overlay rural aesthetic. And I offered that 24-foot height restriction, which we see in the VR District and in other places. Those are the type of concessions that I think are appropriate. And I, you know, 40 dwellings, as I mentioned earlier, that was under a previous plan, which is not available under any circumstance today. And speaking specifically about this Article 60, there's 27 dwellings. That's, you know, it's less density than is available to everybody else on the street. You know, there are not restrictions on the current property owners or on future owners. And there is every possibility that sewer is brought to all of those properties and would not, I mean, subject to other votes which will be at this town meeting, would not be available to this property. So even adoption of Article 60, I forget which one we're on, 61, it doesn't create the possibility for greater density than what is already possible on Woodland Drive. And to the point about, you know, comparing this property to the properties to the south, which derive their frontage from Skyline Drive, I think it's equally worth noting what is immediately to the north of this property. You know, this is right behind the most, currently the most dense housing on the island and the Island Shipping Center, both for Coca-Cola and Cape Cod Express. You know, I think there's value in, I don't know what the right term is, but in step zoning, like you don't go from C-Tech and R5, which are the most dense residential and the heaviest industrial or commercial zones, to Lug 2. I mean, I don't know where else something like that exists. And so, again, this article specifically is asking for the property to be treated uniformly so that the entire property is in one zoning district and to be treated exactly like everyone else on the street.
Thank you, Stephen. So I, yeah. Some people would, and we as a board refer to that often as creep, right? Like, we've said no to a couple zoning change articles because we felt that the zoning was creeping and we didn't like it. But more to my point, Stephen, really is that even though our decision can't hinge on deed restrictions, I think we're not your biggest battle. Your real battle is with the community. And I can hear loud and clear from those who've stood up and spoken and people that have spoken in the past, that they're not totally against this as long as they can be assured of certain things. And I think that that has to do with affordability and year-round housing. So I would strongly suggest that, not for us because our decision can't be based on it, but for the community in general, that you put some thought into that, because that's really who you have to sell this to. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and there will be thought. There has been a lot of thought put into that. I mean, the idea last fall was that property would be developed at a density that didn't require subsidy from the town. But as I've, as I said at the previous hearing before you all end in meetings with Neighbors and with anybody who wants to talk with me about this project, the number of dwellings is not the important thing for me. You know, the important thing for me, or the overarching goal, is that these are homes for people who live and work on Nantucket. That would be difficult to do without subsidy if we're limited to 31 bedrooms. But there is every possibility that the Affordable Housing Trust, particularly with support from neighbors, would be willing to provide that, the level of subsidy to make those things possible. And I have committed in the previous iteration of the deed restrictions that if zoning were to change and the property were added to the sewer district, that the affordability covenants go on immediately. And a new, hopefully, as I said, you know, bolstered version of those restrictions will be in place before town meeting. People will know exactly what it is that they're voting for. So, you know, hopefully, some combination of things happens with the neighborhood, where there's agreement on what the appropriate number of bedrooms or dwellings is and that there's commitments from the Affordable Housing Trust or others such that it all works out and it can all be affordable. If those things could not happen and the property were limited to 31 bedrooms and Article 61 were to pass and there were nine lots, there would be fewer bedrooms per acre than what already exists on Woodland Drive. And so, you know, if that's the worst case, I don't think that that's a terrible scenario. So I understand that you'd like commitments, and I'd like to be able to make those commitments. You know, I really would like to make the commitments that this project's going to end up the way I have envisioned it and in the way that I've pursued it for going on three years now. But I just, I can't tell you that they will be affordable without some other pieces happening.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Phil, can we, all right, go ahead. I'll go ahead.
Buildings and bedrooms are one part of the story. I'd like to see a plan. Something we can actually look at.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Just quickly, I don't want to get into a back and forth. But, you know, I've put forward plans for different ideas. I don't know, you know, I don't know what might be supported. Like, I have a subdivision plan that shows what lots would look like if this was divided under R20. I can put boxes that look like houses on them, and I'm happy to do that. And I shared in the neighborhood meetings, including some that Phil was on, they were just screenshots, I didn't, you know, send to everybody. But you can't plan for like every potential scenario. But, you know, perhaps based on whatever action you all decide to take tonight, I have some more definition about, you know, what type of plan is worth pursuing and depicting. And we'll have several months to continue to talk about it. And certainly, people will be aware, before we get to town meeting, what might happen if they vote for the zoning change. It would have been very difficult, if not impossible, for me to prepare scenarios for every potentiality for you all to look at today. But I am committed to showing people what they will be voting for.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kitchener.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've heard a lot about numbers, bedrooms, density, creep. And all of that is very, very valid. I'm just not going to repeat it all. We've heard from Art and Meredith and Stephen and so forth. I'd like to just keep my remarks short. You know, I am not in favor of, whatever you want to call it, downzoning. But zoning changes that the majority of the neighborhood do not want. And especially when that includes moving things from the country to the town overlay. And I don't, you know, no one's brought up, and I'm glad they've not brought up the NIMBY term, because this is about respect for homeowners that brought into a neighborhood for a reason some years ago. And I don't think it's for us to take that away unless the majority of homeowners in the neighborhood support it. And I, you know, I know Stephen has done, you know, a lot of outreach and, you know, I just encourage him to keep doing that. But I think as Dave said, you know, this is, it's about the community. And I do not think we should be voting to change significantly the look and feel of their community. I, you know, I'm a member of the Nantucket Land Trust Board, so I fight for affordable housing as hard as everyone. We need it, we must have it. But it can't be at the expense of established neighborhoods that just want the zoning left the way it was when they bought their property. So there are other ways to attack the affordable housing and attainable housing problems, and we're doing that. And I think we need to work harder on those before we take away the character of existing home neighborhoods that owners do not want to see. So I would not be in favor of a positive recommendation for this at this point. More work needs to be done by Stephen, you know, and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Welcome, Suzanne.
Hi, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Kitchener. I think you expressed the feelings of the neighborhood very well. I just want to say I agree with Art that you have to look at this from what could potentially end up there. And the decision needs to be made there. I'd also like to say that in both of the meetings with the neighbors and Mr. Maury, I was in two of the sessions, and we much appreciate the time he gave. I was in two of the sessions and we much appreciate the time he gave. But I have to say that the neighbors had a very different reaction depending on whether or not Sewer was there. So that needs to be considered as well, because at this point, we don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay. All right, I'll just board thoughts one.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry, Stephen.
No, if, if you don't mind, I just wanted to address something that, that John had to say about the country overlay district. And it is true that Woodland Drive is in the country overlay district, but I think it's the only example you can find of a neighborhood that's in R20 and is in the country overlay district.
Yep.
And, and it is also true that it's not only in the town's master plan, but it's in the Surfside Area Plan, that where a property exists in two districts, you put it into one. And there's a lot in the master plan and we haven't been able to get to it all. But that's something that probably should have been cleaned up. And, you know, as far as changing the character, I, I, I do understand that if Sewer were added, coupled with a zoning change, it could change, it, it, it could change the street. But the rest of the street is in the Sewer District already. And at some point, it's going to be connected to Sewer. And then this will be the only portion of the street that's not. But that's not really what's up for debate today. I mean, this is talking about a potential for nine lots, a potential for 27 dwellings, with a limitation to 31 bedrooms. And both of those ratios, the number of dwellings per acre and the number of bedrooms per acre, are both less than what exists now. Sorry, the bedrooms per acre is lower than what exists now. And the dwellings per acre would be higher than what exists now, but it is lower than what could be built on those properties today. So this is not about changing the character of a neighborhood. This would bring it in line with the rest of the neighborhood. I think what's happening is that a portion of this property is being treated as though it's part of Skyline Drive and it is not part of Skyline Drive, any more than it's a part of Dave Kim or Harvey Road or any of the other surrounding properties. And, you know, it wouldn't be appropriate for there to be a, a, a soft drink distribution center here. And I don't think it's appropriate to judge this property by the Lug 2 zoning that exists on another street, just because this is a holdover from some line that was drawn on a map decades ago.
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just point one quick thing out that just procedurally, I just want to make sure we are all clear. We are only discussing right now the change from Lug 2 to R20. I know there's a lot of concepts that it makes sense to co-mingle in conversation, but the public hearing right at this moment that you'll be taking action on is the portion changing from Lug 2 to R20.
Yes.
Correct.
Article 260, right? Thank you. Yep, okay. All right, anyone else? One members?
Clear.
Dave. Hello, Dave. Welcome, Dave.
Well, so I'm probably going to get crucified here for this, but I, I support Stephen and, and rarely do I say this, but I, I trust Stephen and I don't trust developers ever. I, I, I think that, I, I think that it's important that Stephen has an opportunity to, to show us that, that he's going to do what he says he's going to do. I, I think, and, and all of that will take place before town meeting by, by his, his action as far as, as lots and buildings and, and and deed restrictions. And, and if that doesn't take place by town meeting, then we have the opportunity to vote that down as a community, right? We, our ability to build housing and especially housing that is primarily directed at the missing middle, which is that 250-plus of, of AMI, is, is abhorrent. We, we are not able to do it. We have land, we have money. It is extremely difficult for this town to do it. So when a developer shows up and is willing to address the problem, I have a hard time voting no for it. And, and I, I think that, you know, Stephen had a good point. We're not talking about Clay Street here, okay? Clay Street is art of that neighborhood. I believe that, that Stephen's lot is part of Woodland Drive, which is primarily R20. And let's not forget, this was a junkyard. This was probably one of the worst toxic waste sites on the island. I don't mean toxic waste site, but it, it, it was a disaster. So, yeah, a, a serious violation. So I, you know, and, and I stood up and voted no strongly on Clay Street. This is a different property with, with an opportunity to a, address home ownership for a part of our community that doesn't have that opportunity. So I, I'm going out on a limb. Stephen, don't let me down, but, but I, I support what you're trying to do and, and I hope you can see it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right.
I'll, I'll wait a second.
Okay, thank you. Darla Stuckey, please.
Thank you again. Dave, Mr. Iverson, I, I hope, I hope you're right, that we can trust Stephen. But I will say this, you know, the, the, the entire hour and a half conversation that the neighbors had with Stephen was predicated on 15 houses, not 27. So, and he, and he started it that way. So maybe he presumes that Sewer won't pass. I don't know. But I feel really like it's a slippery slope here and I feel like we're a little bit whipsawed because we talked a lot about 15 houses, you know, and how they could be configured and how many bedrooms and how many cars and things like that. So just the, the, what we talked about on our, on our calls were not like what he's talking about now. So that, that's just all I want to say. So it scares me a little bit.
Mr. Chair, can I respond?
Yeah, please.
No, and Darla, I appreciate that. I hear all, all, all of what you're saying. And, and what I'm saying is, is that Stephen has an opportunity to, to show you, the neighbors and the community as a whole, what he's going to do and he's going to back that up by action. And if he doesn't do it by town meeting, everyone has the buttons. They can push, you know, just because I support him here doesn't mean I would necessarily support him at town meeting. We are, this is just part of the process. And I think that if we give him space in that process, I'm hopeful that he can make it right, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Art, do you want to go ahead, please?
I, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I completely appreciate the chair's comments, but the space that you hope to give him is at the risk and on the backs of the neighbors. And that risk is very high. If you hope that it's something's going to happen before town meeting, then you should give a negative recommendation and then see what gets worked out and perhaps change your recommendation prior to town meeting. But it shouldn't go in the other direction. There's, there's so much risk here. You know, there's no undoing zoning once it's been, you know, changed at town meeting because people feel that the planning board is, is behind this. And I, you know, I, I understand and applaud what Stephen's trying to do, but when it's coming in with all of the, you know, the actual, anything with teeth isn't actually in place yet, anything could change. And he just said, you know, well, Woodland's going to be sewed one day and there's already a sewer line there, but then he's not talking about, I think that the planning board, and we, we don't know what's going to happen, but I think that if you're looking at supporting this article, it fully has to be done on the basis of what the zoning would allow and not what, you know, the wastewater capacity is. And I think it's a, I, I think it's a very slippery slope and I think it's very unfair to the neighbors to, for, for the planning board to support such a density increase without actually having, you know, assurances and restrictions and those sort of things worked out in place. If you can come up with those, and maybe it's for our next special town meeting, maybe it's for this one, but right now, to give a positive recommendation on a hope and a prayer, it's just really not fair to the other property owners. And I, I hope you could see that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to address what, what Darla had to say. And, and it's true that our discussions primarily centered around 15 dwellings because it was under the presumption that there would be no sewer available and it wouldn't make sense to develop 27 houses with 31 bedrooms. But to Art's point, you all must consider what could be built. And with the passage of this article, there could be nine lots and there could be 27 dwellings. So that's the, that's the difference. I mean, with 31 bedrooms, I wouldn't build 27 houses. It wouldn't make sense to do that. But to look at, you know, the, the, you know, what's the most that could be built if this article were to pass, it's 27. And so that's why I'm focusing on that number now. Whatever the outcome of this vote tonight, I would hope to continue the conversation with neighbors and go together to the Affordable Housing Trust or, or whomever, you know, might make this project feasible at an acceptable number of dwellings. If, if you were to endorse this, it doesn't guarantee that anything's going to happen at town meeting. But I will say that a negative recommendation is likely to stifle conversation with the Affordable Housing Trust. And that happened in the run-up to last special town meeting, where the Housing Trust didn't want to discuss at length a project that was predicated on a zoning change. And perhaps with support from neighbors, which I, I knew coming into tonight and I know going forward, I need to, I need to earn that trust. But I hope that I can and that we can work together on a plan that has a meaningful number of homes at a reasonable scale and that we can get support from other arms of the town to make those things happen. So there is no circumstance where we go to town meeting on May 7th and people are at risk for a bait and switch. You know, there will be binding deed restrictions in the way that there were at special town meeting last year, except that I'll have the benefit of input from town council and, and from neighbors. They will be more robust, not less restrictive than what I had proposed last year. So, you know, whatever you do tonight, there, there is no opportunity on May 7th that people are unclear about what might happen with the property if they support zoning or sewer or whatever. So I'll just leave you with that.
Thank you. Want to say something?
Probably.
Did you ask?
Yes, I do. Always look through the glass, sorry.
So, times is better.
So here we are at the, at the end of the, of this little area. And I said this at the last meeting when we voted against the Clay Street change. It's already in that neighborhood, like in it, further in. This piece of property could be blue from the late 70s, just like the other stuff. And no one would ever have said anything. It would have just been R20. No one would have said a word for the last 50-something years. Okay? Like the Hummock Pond's R20, nobody ever said a word. They still don't, actually. Quidnet's R20, no one says anything. Wallinett's R1, no one says anything. Big plan to make that R1. What was that, a master plan in 1972? No, it just happened. Montemoy was mentioned. Montemoy was Lug 1 for a long time. It's a perfect zoning district, but guess what? They got sewer now. Those lots are all getting built out individually perfectly to the maximum, mini trophies all set. And that's what it should be. This ain't Montemoy. This ain't Quidnet and this isn't Wallinett. This is a junkyard, a crap that just happens to not be zoned for what no one ever thought it needed to be, because no one cared. It was worth pennies. We made the decisions in Richmond because it was sold. And it was better to have the outcome now than it would have been, what could have happened there with the zoning that it had. So I see this spot as sort of a, it, it, it's certainly not, I mean, when you look at Hawthorne Park, that was junk and a mess in R20, by the way. And Art's flex thing and he's got in here is a good point to make because people don't know what that really is. That's a flex development now, but that could have been a whole bunch of anti-lots in sewer from Aurora. They got sewer down there now. So this is one of those ones, and Dave is right. I mean, it's, what do you want here? Two, two-acre lots, oversized with pools, maybe a pickleball court or two. You know, maybe throw a basketball hoop in. Probably won't get used very often. I mean, this is what we're faced with and this, this isn't going to be the last time we have to look at something like this that's not in the middle of where everyone says they bought there because it was Lug 2. I mean, that statement gets overused. That's been getting used for a long time. Zoning is not an infinite thing. It doesn't stay the same. If it stayed the same, we'd have four districts and that's it from 72. We had four. Four, just so you know. So we had R1 out to the State Forest. That was a good plan. Now it's R20. Wasn't a very good plan to even make it that, but that's what it is, on the left side of Rugged Road. So I, I, in the same camp as Dave, I want to trust Stephen. He's a native. He lives here. His family here. This is not Surfside Crossing. This is not a 40B situation. This is not even a workforce housing bylaw situation. We don't have that in this district. Something good can come out of this if it's done right, the right agreements and the right trust factor that needs to happen. This community can dig its heels in deep on every, on every imaginable thing. I don't want that to happen here because this is not what it looks like in the sense of the density that could happen here is not as bad as, as a 40B, obviously. It's not as, it's not like it's R5 already, similar to Old South Road, the one on the right up in Young's, which, all that existing property. But there needs to be, I do agree, there needs to be a plan. There needs to be some agreements to allow that. As Dave says, that middle price range, it doesn't exist on Nantucket. I think one of the things that's a problem when we start talking about this is that people don't realize how expensive stuff is now. I mean, if you're not doing it all the time and talking to people, it's scary what it costs to build a house here now. It is, it's seven digits, no matter what you do. And that's not including land. So for him to go out on this limb for so long with this piece of land, I, I commend him for that. Because it's not an easy thing to do. This could be sold on the market and be what every other place would be if they all got sold one at a time in this whole neighborhood. Because nobody from Nantucket is buying any of those Lug 2 lots. I can tell you that. Nobody. Unless they gave it away. So that's what I mean. So that's what I mean. So um, that's my statement for now.
Barry. Thank you. So just a little curious because it, were there practical, through you, Mr. Moore, were there practical solutions offered as alternatives to this in speaking with people? Or I, I, I?
I, I don't know if I'd call them alternatives, but I would say that there was, it, it was very constructive. I mean, it, it really was. This was not a series of combative meetings and it was a series of meetings and people continued to come and, and I do think that there is a reasonable agreement that can be reached amongst, amongst all of us and that's what I hope to happen on May seventh. You know, my wife has allowed me to say she won't be going to town meeting. It was too much for her to last, uh, to, to watch last time around. You know, there are people, including my, I've got one business partner on this deal who quite frankly have asked me to stop and I, and I haven't, at least not yet because I think that there can be something good that comes out of this. And, and I don't mean a financial windfall. That frankly, I don't know that it would be any greater, certainly won't be any faster than if we just divided the land in the way that you all approved last fall and just sold it off. But this property was identified years ago by a group of people, including some of you in this room, as an appropriate place for affordable housing. And now this isn't an affordable housing project with a capital A. This is intended to be attainable housing where people own all four walls and you have some privacy and there's significant green space and it fits within the character of this neighborhood. And there is no guarantee, as I said before, that I can give you tonight that's going to make all those things possible. But this is a step in the process that leads up to town meeting where there will be a document that will be recorded and will be binding on the property if voters like the idea. And voters, of course, includes the neighborhood and it includes you all. If you don't agree that I've, you know, done the things that I'm telling you now that I will do, then I would expect you to vote it down. And, and so, you know, this is part of a process. This is not a final decision on anything. But it's an important part. I mean, your voice does carry a lot of weight and I would ask you to allow the process to continue to unfold.
Thank you for answering that for me. Because again, once again, and I had mentioned this at the last meeting as well too, I, I was picking back up on some of those same tones of not offering solutions to what should happen. They were, they were highly generalized comments about what should happen. And that always bothers me because if, if, you know, you can't just say, I'm all about affordable housing. I'm all about trying, but not after the solution behind it at this point. And I understand it's, it's a very complex task under which to get there. I have to concur with my colleagues, both, both Mr. Iverson and Mr. Lowell on this, that I, I think at a minimum, the fair and right thing to do at this point is to allow this to advance toward town meeting. And by then, you should be able to provide the answers necessary. My sincere hope is a town meeting too, if people still don't like it, then I, I, instead of, again, it should go elsewhere, whatever, I, I would really like people to be able to offer what is the practical solution. Because unfortunately, there's no way to do this in an overarching capacity. As with anything, it's a very slow, meticulous, step-by-step process under which to get there. And again, you know, again too, I think as Mr. Lowell said, can you pull up that map for me? Because I think that's really an important thing again. It, it, for what this is and where it is, these changes really should be taking place. They should have taken place a long time ago. But again, things are slow, meticulous and until someone sees potential somewhere, they just, they can languish. So here we go. Now we've got an opportunity before us. And I'm not going to say this is gonna, this is, this isn't going to cure everything, but it's a step in the right direction toward making something happen. And that's where I think we need to be bold enough to say, okay, let's continue the walk and see what begins to come out. So I would ask you to please, again, we're trying to be sensitive toward everyone here. We really are. I understand. No one, again, we all, no, no one likes change. They don't. They, they prefer the static thing, but if we can take a moment and pull back up a little bit and, and see what it is, there are times we have to sacrifice a little bit as well too, to look at what is going to be the greater good for the community. And sometimes that's a little bit of a tough pill to swallow, but nonetheless, if you can rally yourself toward that, you can also be, I think, very proud to be able to hold your head up and say, yeah, I was, I believed in it. I was part of the solution to make that happen. Because for nothing to happen at this point, not good, not good. Because we see the effect of that right now. Someone had brought up, there's, again, I'm not going to name names. But I would probably say someone who's very near and dear to me is, is looking at that same thing and they are just having one hell of a time. So I look at this and I say, here we go. There is a real potential here. To me, if, if, if I could solve that by doing this for this one person, I would be thrilled. Absolutely. And a lot of the other things that come up, the speculative aspects, because I just went through this with someone not too long ago. The speculative aspects need to be addressed one by one, very systematically and, and meticulously. I would say, please, let's, let's give this a chance. Let's, and if Mr. Moore said things don't happen by town meeting, then we're at a very different stage where this will finally track itself to. But if he does deliver on all those aspects and you haven't given him anything, any other direction from the neighborhoods about it, then I ask you to please be faithful to that, that cause as well too. Okay, so this is one piece of a number of components and there you go. This, as much as I, we need to separate this into its, its. I get that, but there's, there's a bigger holistic thing.
Howard, could you put your mic on, please?
Oh, could you put your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to know how you specifically are proposing to act on the motion on the table within the context of what great words you just raised.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to take this and the other things that begin to work together, even though we have to systematically break them apart and keep reusing that to reinforce it for the entire, for everything here unless something comes up out of left field that I am not aware of. So, and, and that's just part of what we have to do with zoning sometimes. And, and even with other projects I've been involved with, sometimes you have to say, okay, this is a number of pieces and elements to it. Let's tackle each one.
I think everybody agrees with you, but I'm just asking you a very specific question.
No, I'm just saying, so.
You made a grand speech and I think it was a great speech.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Appreciate what you said.
So the, the short answer is?
There's a question on the table. What do you recommend to do based on?
What I recommend to do is, okay, so I'm sorry. The answer is yes, I should support this.
Thank you.
There you go. Sorry, I didn't mean to be so.
I didn't know what you were, where you're going with this particular matter.
I'm so sorry. Thank you for helping me to be succinct. Thank you. Thank you.
Steve, can I ask just one question? Do you mind going to the mic for a second? So by, by right, you could have fifteen ounces right now, but if you did R twenty, what could you do with sewer? And I know that's a calculating, calculation that you probably haven't performed, but to that point, then you're now waiting for the sewer department. My understanding from the sewer department is that this is on the bottom of the list to come to your neighborhood. Is that, my understanding, I'm just trying to bring all the facts forward. If I understand everything, I just need to clarify what I've heard.
Sure. I'm trying to understand the question. So if, if sewer were added and no zoning change?
Say there was, say there was a zoning change, but sewer didn't come in. And say that was ten years down the line.
Yeah. Um, I'm quite certain that the people who want me to stop pursuing this would not allow me to wait ten years. So something, something will happen in the interim. And so what would happen likely even with the passage of this Article sixty-one, which would allow eighteen dwellings, is that a smaller number of dwellings, like fifteen, are built with an average of two bedrooms. And the average of two bedrooms, I go back to, that was the original plan, a mix of one, two and three-bedroom homes with fifty percent of whatever number of total dwellings being two bedrooms. So that's the more likely scenario, not twenty-seven homes, which would be allowed with, with, with nine lots. And I think I'll take this opportunity to say that whatever you do here with this Article sixty-one, I'd ask you to um, make a negative recommendation on Article sixty. That's not, it, it's not something that I'm interested in pursuing. I do think that passing Article sixty-one requires, but passing Article sixty-one without Article sixty reduces the total number of dwellings that can be built on the site. And it will necessitate that I get some subsidy in order to meet these price, um, price targets. But I also think it's the only reasonable path forward. So, so again, whatever you do here on Article sixty-one, I'm not interested in pursuing Article sixty. So the portion of the property that's in R twenty, I'd ask you to leave it that way.
And right, but to my, what I was basically getting at was it would be a slow growth. So say you did, we, we allowed R twenty in this area and then you were able to develop by right because of that, but you did not have the town sewer coming to you. Basically what I was saying is like, say all of a sudden, there is impacts that were unforeseen that that septic of sewer line coming in at a later date and that would be something where you say, wait a minute, now we're going to have twenty-seven ounces and I think that would be too much. So my, my point is that there would be a slower growth to that anthem. I know you want to link them together.
Yeah, and, and, and just in fairness to everybody who's, who's listening and will watch this back. You know, if, if there were sewer and there were nine lots, there could be twenty-seven.
Right.
And so everybody should understand that. But that's all part of this matrix that's going to be worked out between now and town meeting. Everybody's going to know what they're voting for. And I expect that there will be a binding limitation on the whole property as to the number of dwellings and as to the number of bedrooms with or without sewer. I mean, I think there's merits to bringing sewer here, even if the limitation was to the same thirty-one bedrooms, for instance. So I, I don't know that that, um, I, I, I can't give you a fulsome answer to that because even with sewer, the goal is not to fit as many bedrooms as we can.
Okay. Go ahead. This is, this is good. Okay, go ahead. You're onto something. He just sort of took what I was thinking, so I'm going to throw this in a different way. Okay, I mean, we talk about septic, like, oh yeah, septic, oh yeah, sewer. Like it ain't cheap to put in a septic system now. Okay? You don't just say, wow, we'll, we'll switch it. I watched a covenant house get built three years ago, or two, or sure, it's two or three, on the corner of South Pasture Lane and South Shore. And here comes the gravity line ten minutes later. That's insanity. Okay? Like that made me sick to my stomach, knowing, by the way, that that was coming and they had to put that in. This isn't nineteen sixty, okay, where you just dug a hole with your friends on the weekend. Because that's what it was like, Barry. I know you weren't here, but it was like that and not too long ago. So, so anyway, you just dug a hole for the, yeah, I think I'll build a house this weekend. So Steve, I think that Joe has hit the nail on the head here. You come up with a number with sewer that's less than what it could be. Okay? Because sewer, because nobody wants to hook up the septic that's right next to sewer. Like that's nuts, right? Look what happened in my neighborhood. We put the sep, pump station in the second lowest, uh, second highest spot so no one would hook up. Now everybody's hooking up with pumps that are going to have to be repaired. I mean, it's ridiculous how we push against certain things and ten years later, we're all in favor of it. That's what happens in this community. So we have a crystal ball with this two hundred and whatever thousand square foot, two hundred and nine thousand square foot piece of land and say, okay, what are we going to approve or to be there with sewer, but less than what it could be?
Right.
So that, because it isn't free to put in alternative septic systems and then you have to abandon them?
Right.
Because sewer came by? Like that's insanity.
And, and I think those are good points. And, and Megan set the stage earlier that this isn't a, a negotiation as such, like you can't require certain things of me in exchange for, but, but I can provide and I'm willing to provide and I tried to provide last fall and I will provide before this spring, agreements for exactly what things will be and what they'll look like and how many bedrooms can be there. And the enforcement agent for that will be the town going forward. It's not something where, you know, I'm going to be able to change it after the fact. So, so either the numbers are going to work, and by numbers, I mean dwellings, cars, bedrooms, subsidy, prices for the houses, all of those things will be laid out and then people will like it or they won't.
Can I, can I just clarify a point? Because I think I, I'm getting what Stephen's saying, but I don't know that it's clear. Stephen, is it fair to say that you've committed to work with town staff and town council in advance of town meeting to make sure, um, you know, the, the language that you're intending to include is also vetted through town resources as well?
That it's all in the proper form and that it addresses neighbor concerns and that, yeah, yeah. So, so these are, you know, voluntary things that I will be providing and codifying in a way that town council and others agree is in the proper form so that they can be trusted, basically.
All right. Thank you. All right. John Kitchener, can we go back to you, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I want to come back to part of Barry's very eloquent speech, very, very eloquent. Thank you, Barry. Because one of the things that he said really resonated with me and that was being fair to everyone. You know, our vote, our, our position should be fair to everyone. And I, I think that's right. So I, I want to just clarify one thing. When I said, I don't think we should be giving this, at this point, a positive recommendation, the record will show that I did not say we should give it a negative. I think what we should consider is giving it a take no action so that we give Stephen um, the trust that, that, that Dave talked about to do um, what he's talking about doing between now and town meeting. But we also take care of the neighbors that at this moment have not been able to um, buy into a plan, a scheme, whatever we want to call it. So I think for us to consider a take no action, that, that leaves both sides to really come at this fairly, to, to, to get something for town meeting. So um, you know, I, I would hope, Mr. Chair, when we get to it. So, you know, I would hope, Mr. Chair, when we get to it, that we will consider that perhaps a vote on take no action is something we can vote on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. And who else was up next? Graham Kilbert, please.
Graham, go ahead.
I apologize I came in late on this, but I'm still trying to understand what Mr. Maury's plan would look like. As I understand it, there are four 20,000 square foot lots. And as I understand it, and I could be wrong, that each one of those lots can have the equivalent of three dwellings on them, primary, secondary, and tertiary. But I don't understand how the ownership of those are structured. Are there gonna be three separate owners of each one of those individual lots? So in essence, a mini subdivision on each lot? Is that how it's gonna be structured? And then the second thing I want to bring up is that on Woodland, there are roughly 14 houses on that street in total right now. And a few of them, I'm not sure how many have secondary dwellings, but I would say half do not. So this proposal would in essence double the number of cars on that small little cul-de-sac. Additionally, the construction of this project, whatever is approved, is gonna be bringing heavy equipment up and down Skyline Drive for the next three years. And how is that gonna be dealt with? I mean, we've already gone through years of having a road that was hit by a mortar barrage. It was finally repaired by the town through their process of bringing water to the people in that area. And how do we ensure that the road's not gonna get chewed up again when cement mixers and all kinds of other heavy equipment is coming back and forth on that road and then turning on to Woodland Drive? And the last thing is, and again, I apologize if it's already brought up, there's no sidewalk on Skyline Drive. And there's now people out biking, walking their children. We walk our dog. And you're gonna basically introduce a lot of heavy equipment to that road regardless of what's being done. And I understand there will be development there. I'm not saying I'm against that. I'm against the volume of houses that are being proposed. But there's a number of things that don't appear to have been addressed by Mr. Maury's plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. And for Graham's edification, because he wasn't at the top of the meeting, this tract of land that we're talking about, which is under Articles 60 and 61, is five acres. The total of the rest of Woodland Drive, those acre, the acreage is six acres. So it is true that if Article 61 were to pass, and this is divided into nine lots, should essentially double the number of houses. And it's not quite double, but it could essentially double the number of houses. But that is because it would be treated like the rest of the street. It's not asking for greater density. And in fact, based on increased restrictions under Title V, it would have fewer bedrooms per acre than already exists on the rest of Woodland Drive. So that's the, that's the worst-case scenario, is that this property looks like the rest of Woodland Drive does today.
Okay, thank you. Phil.
Here's my question. Does this have to be decided tonight? I'm with John on this, in that I feel like the neighborhood still needs more specifics. And it's something we should hash out more with Steve over the next couple of weeks. You know, there's a lot of questions that I have. I don't even want to take the time to state them now. It doesn't matter. But, you know, and I'm not alone with that. So my question is, does this have to be decided yes or no tonight?
No. No, but I don't, I don't know if the checklist that's put before him, if he could achieve a lot of that.
What's that?
I don't know if he could achieve a lot of the information that we're requiring by our last meeting of March 6th. So this is where, you know, as we've been saying, is that there has to be some trust to town meeting.
The trust part of it is, you know, this started out with, the sales pitch was teachers, firemen, police, hospital people, DP, whoever, et cetera, townspeople. And then, you know, it kind of got away from that pretty fast. It started at a million, it went to a million, too. I know the way prices are going up, I know it's gonna be more than that. Who do you expect to be buying these houses? And here's the big question. At the end of the day, even a tertiary, how many people do you, you know, you could get four, five, or six in a tertiary, especially if there's a basement. I've seen it. That's the fear. That's what it's all about. Barry, you're asking the last time around, you know, you know, well, density is the word tonight. I hear about density, density, density. I'll be happy to take a ride with you and show you what people in that area are afraid of. You know, I don't want to sound like a jerk about this at all. I just, I'd be happy to do it. Density, you know, like, density over where you live, Steve, in that area, I forget, there's a, you didn't build it, I can't remember the name of it.
Beach Plum Village.
What's that?
Beach Plum Village. Is that what you're talking about?
Right, right. That's one kind of density, and that works. The type of people who bought in there want to have a home. And they don't want it overrun. The other type of density I feel like we're talking about here is where you end up with a street, or could end up with a street, like, say, Marion Drive, where there's just, you're stuffing people in in order to be able to afford it. Again, I understand why they have to do it, but we just don't want to end up with that. That's the fear.
Not, and I'm sorry, I'm not gonna, but this is where homeowner associations, this is where restrictions, that's where, you know, the beach plum development has those, there's, you know, other ones that I think we've learned from our mistakes. And I think that that's what, we don't want to have happen. You know, I'm speaking for the board, and I really shouldn't be, but that is, that is something we do not want to have. And I think that, you know, Noshop's another one that works very well because they have a proper, you know, neighborhood association. Noshop. I think they have a proper association, and they all work together, and, you know, there's restrictions and things you can't do on licensed garden. So I, we get what you want, or you're asking. We want the same thing, so just, so you know, we're not, we're not just, like, cutting this loose. You know, as Nat said, 60s, oh, I want to build a house and, you know, start digging a hole. So there's a lot of rules and regulations that will have to happen, and guide rails that we will put in place. So, but whatever the determination is. All right? Answer your question?
Good, Barry.
Okay.
I just want to say one thing to Mr. Groove, you too. You've known me for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know? Yeah, I don't necessarily want to take a ride, but I'm certainly willing to sit down and have coffee with you at this point. And here you go. This is, this is a major problem we keep coming up against, is the fear-driven parts of things.
Right.
And I, there's not a person in this room who doesn't find something they are fearful of. Could be, could be any number of things, but the real key to that a lot of times is to be able to, first of all, address what that fear is. Make it very tangible. And move it outside of that amorphous cloud of fear. So put something behind it and then begin to address, if there are real potential solutions to it. It's a little bit of a meticulous process, but I've found it works really well. Left unchecked, it goes rampant, and that's a big thing. So I would offer that to anyone at this point because maybe somehow we can get to some insights of what really is going on out there. And just for the fun of it, I was through that with someone else just this past week about these fears of things.
Yeah.
And strangely enough, it was like-
You get why, don't you?
Pardon?
You certainly get why.
Oh, I get it. I get it. I understand that. But I also understand, too, that at times, instead, fear can be very powerful because it just doesn't always go away. It sits there and eats away at things. And I'm a firm believer that instead of eating away at things, there's a point where it's time to reach out and maybe try to see if it can be addressed and understood in a very different light. And I'm happy, I'm happy to take that venture with you, shall we say.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah?
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I was gonna go to Stephen first.
Just, it'd be very brief. I just want to make it clear to Phil and then everyone else. The commitments or the sales pitch, as he called it, that these homes would be geared toward and, you know, special offering to certain people, I'm not backing away from that at all. I mean, we have, we're not going through the details of what those deed restrictions are. But they will be restated, and it will include that preferential look to people who work in all those same professions that we talked about before. As far as increase in pricing, the $1.2 million number comes from, that's the maximum that it can be sold for at 240% AMI, I believe. A million dollars might have been achievable with a greater number of units and without subsidy. It might have been achievable. I mean, we never, we didn't get to the point of, like, pricing out construction of the homes. It's all very conceptual. But I can say $1.2 million is, that's the cap because that's statutorily set every year. And so that's something to budget against. That's something that I can use together with a total number of dwellings. I can use those two things to determine, here's how much the community through the Affordable Housing Trust would have to participate in the deal in order to make all those things happen. So just wanted to clarify, I'm not intentionally, like, saying something and then changing the story. That's, that's the explanation for those things. And as far as the density comparison to Beach Plum Village, there's at least, there's 40 houses on 10 acres. And there's closer to 160 than 120 bedrooms in there. That is significantly more, more than double the number of bedrooms per acre that this is, that this could be, even, even if it got the sewer. So, so it's a lot less dense. And I hear sometimes from people who say, I thought Satchin Path was gonna be bad, and it's not so bad. And this, again, is almost exactly the same in terms of dwellings per acre, and it's less in terms of bedrooms per acre. So I'm not suggesting that Skyline Drive is the same as Surfside Drive, but it's useful to have these kind of comparisons in our mind when we think about, you know, what this might look like.
Thank you, Stephen. Go ahead.
Just to add to what Steve said about the comparison stuff, that's a really good, that's what I do. My, the 40B across from me, Avon Square, 2007, 2006, everybody was against it until it was done. Now it's the neighborhood. It's funny how that happens. When we got them down to the number that they're at versus what the original number was, it became palatable to everyone, for the most part. But I want to talk about something else. The fact that this property that we're talking about, it's 418,000 square feet if you include the other R20, is part of the remaining 2.7% to 2.8% open space privately owned land left on Nantucket. And that's including Green Hills and all those gigantic property owners out there that still exist with 40, 50 acres of land. And this little, tiny little piece, this gentleman is trying really hard with a lot of issues. I'm not talking about this issue. I'm talking about cleaning it up and trying to hold on to this property and pay taxes on this property and try to make this work to not become all off-island ownership, because that's what would happen. And that middle that everyone talks about, that one point something, is the number that doesn't exist. It's, it's just where we are. And this is only in the last, you know, five years or whatever. It wasn't like this even 10 years ago. But that's where we are now. And it's not gonna get better. There's a house on Essex Road listed for just under $2 million right now. If I said that at a meeting five years ago, I would have been dragged away to the funny fountain because no one would have believed it. They would have thought I was crazy. Well, there it is. Have a good day. One of the houses across the street in the 40B that's a market rate is enlisted for 2.3 for about six months. On a lot, you can't even build a shed. So, believe me, somebody from Nantucket is gonna buy a 1.2, a 1.3 in 10 seconds. Those houses will be sold to locals, year-rounders. So that's not the issue. That will happen. The issue is, how does he get a path to that? We, as a planning board, can't just force things to happen, as Megan said. But there has to be some kind of give and take. If we write this article, the comments explaining this restrictions and stuff that's coming forward, that is essentially giving it a recommendation that we don't have to put in print. We can't say, well, we approve, we give this a positive if Steve Maury does this, 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 and this. You can't say that. But you can put it, something in the comments reflecting what we're asking for or what the applicant is promising, I should say. I don't want to see this property be, I want it to be owned by people like you, Pat, like the new Pat Tafe from this decade, this century. It's, there isn't gonna be people from the 80s anymore owning these houses. Okay? I just don't know how we're gonna get there, but I just don't want to see two big oversized lots like Tom Nevers with Tavanas and all that. I love those places. Those are the places paying the bills, but that, this isn't where they belong, in this spot. The rest of that neighborhood, remaining in Lug 2, in my opinion, is the right thing to do for the foreseeable future, for the next generation to decide that hasn't even born yet. But this spot right here is not just any spot. It was a mess. It could have been R20 from the 70s, from the late 70s, when it was changed. So it's as tough for us, it's tough for me to say this, but I want to put trust in Steve, but with, with God rails in the comments. That would be my position right now. Okay? And did I sigh, Dave, tonight?
No.
I think I did, but I kept shutting the mic off.
But I agree with you, and that's even scarier, okay?
My sigh meter didn't go up tonight. It's been very respectful. Thank you, Nat. Okay. Sorry, we had Suzanne.
Yeah, we have two more public comments. We have Suzanne Dob and then Graham Kilbert again.
Hi, thank you. Thank you. I just feel like I need to clarify on the neighbors' behalf after hearing what Mr. Rector had to say about the fear and making this sound all nebulous and, ooh, we're scared of this. We have very specific fears. We have very specific suggestions. We've been meeting with Stephen Maury to go over these. So it's not just a nebulous, ooh, we're scared, we don't want this here. We have been specific. I'm also hoping to get a clarification from Mr. Rector because a couple of times he said something that made me think that he wants the neighbors to come up with a new plan rather than just discussing it. Is that correct or am I wrong? Maybe just clarify that for me. Thank you.
All right, please.
Yeah, I, I, I'm happy to. The, the thing that I've found troubling at times, I'm glad you're all working together. That, that, that is, that's a big plus. I, it just concerns me when I hear the word fears about certain things because, and I hope they're being addressed. Because that's very important. And again, that's, that's where I was trying to track back to is going to the foundation of what it is, what the perceived problem is and seeing if there's some way to work through that in some amenable means for everyone. And, and what I've found very distressing, I think, as I've said earlier, and again, it's, it's a matter of, people often will say, I, you know, one of the things I've heard religiously at times is, oh, affordable housing, well, it should go elsewhere.
But that's not what we're saying. That's, that's my point.
I know, I'm not saying-
I've been hearing you say that, and the neighbors here, we're a year-round neighborhood. There's a lot of us working shifts out there on Skyline and Woodland. And we understand the need and we're trying to work with it. We don't have these nebulous fears. We have some very legitimate concerns of potentials that we've seen happen elsewhere. So, that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you, but I, I, you know, again, I'd like to be a little bit more articulate and understand maybe what some of those are. And I will respectfully say, at the last meeting, that is exactly what I heard someone come in and say about affordable housing. And it's not the first time I've heard it. It seems to be a refrain. So that's what I'm asking is, because this is an island-wide problem. And the fact that people are just, again, let's come up with tangible solutions to try to deal with these things. But tangible solutions are not what I would call, oh, let's just, again, I've heard this, undeniably, let's just put it elsewhere.
Right, but I don't think you're hearing it from the neighbors in this case.
All right, so I'm, I'm not gonna go back and forth.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome to sit down with me and we can certainly discuss this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Suzanne. Graham Kilbert, please.
Yes, I, again, I, and I, I apologize, I came late. So if this has already been discussed, please let me know. But I listened to what Mr. Kitchener and, and Mr. Lowell say about the fact that, you know, come to a meeting of the minds here. We have met a, a large group of the neighborhood in two separate meetings, have had discussions with Mr. Mori. And we've kind of been working with him to try to come up with some scenario that gives him some of what he needs and gives off some of our, our concerns get, get resolved. So again, what Mr. Kitch, Kitchner is proposing is to, to put this off and let us continue to discuss the, the project with Mr. Mori to come out with something that we can live with and he can live with. And we've started doing that. And I think if we have more time, we can get there. But I think by recommending this and moving it forward, you're kind of putting us in a position where, all right, we're gonna fight it all the way to the end versus let us sit down, give us time to sit down and see if we can come up with something that works for him. And we had a discussion last week about, you know, maybe you do less houses and we work with you to try to get you some subsidies from all the money that's been set aside by the taxpayers of this island. You know, trying to work with him to come to a solution that works for everybody. And I think if we have more time, as has been proposed, I think we can come to a solution that everybody wins. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham.
Mr. Chair, very quickly, last word. I got a text message from the very wise Stephen Cohen, who wanted me to remind to you all and, and to everyone that you can change your motion at, at town meeting. You know, as late as the day of the meeting. If I haven't done the things that I'm telling you now that I will do.
Right.
I, I would expect that you would do that, and I would expect that you'd speak against it. And, and, and you should do it. But what a positive recommendation does here is it allows me, hopefully together with a group of these neighbors, including Mr. Kilbert and others, to go to the Affordable Housing Trust and say, there is at least some momentum. There is a modicum of support from some part of the town that would like to see a plan move forward that sees the development of housing for the year-round community. A take-no-action does not send that same message. And, and again, it can be amended, it can be completely reversed, everything you do here tonight, though it might be printed in the warrant. So, I would ask you to, if, if, if you're considering supporting it subject to all the things that I've said, I would ask you to support it and then allow me to deliver those things. And they'll all be done before town meeting, or everybody should vote no.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and just a little teensy, teensy follow-up to what Steve's talking about. We got, Finance Committee wants to look at this Monday, right, Jill? I know you're not here as a Finance Committee member, but you want to look at this on Monday? Is that what's going on? Oh, wow.
He's recusing, but.
Yeah, Leslie.
I'm just trying to like, when, when Mr. Kilbert's comments were very good, I think that there's other pieces of everything that we try not to conflict with the other entities that look at this. So we write something that, or we say something the opposite or that confuses the next step for the warrant. I mean, this is where Steve's right too about, we can change our motion. At, we have meetings, we have a meeting posted before the meeting because of that, for certain things that come up. The timing of town meeting creates these problems too, in the, for the public. And that's another issue with all of this stuff. Whether, it doesn't matter if it's about this article or about something else. I, I think that Steve's got a message tonight, kind of like an applicant for, for a MCD, in a sense. You know what I mean? It's kind of feels that way. We've got this idea that Joe came up with, which I wish I thought of before he did, but I didn't technically. I, having the sewer not be this big, well, you can do this. All right? If you take 3M subdivision, I have to do this every time I talk, I come up with something that people can come see and, like, they know what it looks like in their head. Those lots were all 19,000 square feet. And forget about what the zoning is now, it's way less than it was. But regardless of zoning, they couldn't build one of them that was there because there was no water either. So you had a 19,000 square foot lot that had, you could barely get a second dwelling depending upon size of the, and how many bedrooms. Now they have water getting creeping down the streets, so they can tweak the properties a little bit. If you had a crystal ball and could get the lot size right and the density right so that people aren't forced to put a septic system in just because we're trying to restrict them, that's what I'm looking at here now. If this can be built with sewer with an agreement that they won't maximize what can go just because it's got sewer, but it's not what it would be on the septic with water, because they have water. That's why it's, they can build a little bit more. That is a big, is a big concession to me. Because the developer doesn't have to spend all this wasted money trying to figure this stuff out. It's not free to sit on this property and try to like hash this out for years. The best news is it's not in court, it's not in appeals, it's not over here and over there like the other one that we see every week. So, this is a good thing because he's hanging in there with us. Us as a community, us as board members, but us as a community. And I think that that's a huge thing that is being overlooked. So, anyway, so that's where I am. Thanks.
All right, before you begin, just for the minute take it, can you just repeat what Nat's questioned you and what you said, just on the mic, please?
Yeah, I think Nat was asking me about the formality with your vote tonight, your motion, and then the FinCom motion later. So I think he just wanted to understand, do we need you to make a motion tonight so that we can make a motion on Monday? But we follow you, so when you make your motion, we'll do ours. And I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole committee, but I think it's safe to say that we would, you know, we could wait if, if you're gonna wait to, for your process. And if you change your motion at the last, we can change ours as well.
Yeah, yeah. That's, thank you for-
That's all I wanted to say.
No, that was perfect. Thank you for coming to the mic. Okay. John, Kitchener, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, it's great to, to hear secondhand, but from Stephen Cohen, and he, you know, and his wisdom reminded us that yes, we can as a board, you know, change our motion right up to town meeting. I, I'm really glad he did that because I think it gives even more weight to the, to the argument that we should allow the neighbors and Stephen Mori to work this out. And let's, at this point, let's, you know, my, let's consider a take-no-action so that both sides have the same kind of, you know, motivation to, to bring to the, to their meetings. And if they reach something good before the meeting, then that would be the time for us to say, okay, well, we're changing from take-no-action to a positive recommendation. I, I think that's better than sort of giving a little more leverage to one side of the, of, of the, what is really a negotiation. I think it's better to let these two parties, you know, continue to work it out, take no action, and then see where we're at, much closer to town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mary Lepre, can you unmute, please? Oh, sorry. Mary, hold on a sec.
I, I was going to say what John just said. And I just would urge you to give it more time and take no action. And then you can always change your plan later.
Thank you, Mary. Chairman Iverson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As much as I respect John and, and Ms. Lepre, I think that, that we need to support him so that he can get the package created, so that he can go to the Affordable Housing Trust and say, hey, I have the support, let's get this going. Because I think that if, if we show, i- i- if, if we don't show support at least till town meeting, then it is gonna be more difficult for him to get the pieces in place. And I 100% support changing our motion if he doesn't. And I'll even stand up at town meeting. But I think we need to show him and give him that support so that he can achieve those things to, to make this project right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, I think we've heard enough. Anyone else public? Go ahead, keep going. Go for it.
So I'm gonna make a motion at this point that we close the public hearing.
Okay, Barry, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And next, Chair is an aye, okay?
I'm gonna make a motion at this point that we give this a positive recommendation, positive affirmation, positive recommendation to town meeting. Quantum of vote being 50%, and I think we've exhausted everything else that, that's underlying that.
I'm gonna second half of discussion.
Okay, Barry, any?
So.
He wants to-
Yeah, sorry, sorry, go ahead, sorry. Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I wanna, I wanna make sure that our comments cover everything. For not only the FinCom, but for the warrant, the printed warrant, or whatever, you know, that's what I'm talking about.
March 6.
And make sure our language states what we have said tonight as far as changing our vote, why we are giving it a positive. And without going beyond the scope of what we're to require of, of the proponent, but of expectations that have been promised by the proponent. So it's not conflicting with Mr. Giorgio's reveal, okay? Okay, how'd I do? No size.
Everyone fine with what Nat just said?
Yes.
Yeah. Barry, any motion?
Yes.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Nay.
I'm gonna be a nay, and the reason I'm gonna just say very quickly is, as Bernie Barley used to say, I'd like to see headlights instead of brake lights. I just feel there's too many loose ends. But I, I will at town meeting, if you have everything done, then I will change my vote. But right now, I just feel like there's just so much to get done in this timeframe. I wish you all the best, but I, I do think that this is gonna be a lot of homework to get done in a short amount of time. But, you know, last time, last night meeting, I think you were rushing to get this in. And I'm glad that you have slowed down, met with the neighborhood, reached out. It sounds like there's a consensus building here, but, you know, that there is some positive things that are coming from this. But I, I do think there's still some homework that needs to be done. So at this time, that's why I'm saying, you know, no. But I love what you're doing, so keep going. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Oh, and I'm an aye, or a nay, sorry, on that last vote. So it was three to two.
Three to two.
Three to two, 50%. All right, moving on to zoning map amendment R20 to R10, 13 portion of, and 13A Woodland Drive. Mr. Mori? Again.
I would ask you to make a negative recommendation on this article.
Okay. All right. Is anyone online? Make a motion to close?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Okay, sorry, I thought I said was, I didn't see.
He has to-
Put it down or call?
Kilbert?
Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to, I apologize. What, what article is that, that he is referring, if you will?
It is a zoning map amendment, R20 to R10, 13 portion of, and 13A Woodland Drive. So it's the, I think it's Q in the packet?
I think we call it 60 now.
Is it 60 now? All right. But in the, in your packet, it is labeled Q up in the right-hand corner.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the public?
No.
Make a motion, then we close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Barry, thank you, Nat. Barry, any motion?
Yea.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
What'd he say?
Aye.
I just don't know what he said.
I said aye.
He's acting as an aye. He's getting a little punchy.
Okay.
John, right? You said yes.
Aye, I did.
Thank you. All right.
I, I'm gonna make a motion at this point that we give this a negative recommendation, but we do still need to identify that the quantum of vote is 50% in case anything else changes.
Yep, and is that a take-no-action or not to adopt?
I'm sorry, not to adopt. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I'm so sorry, thank you.
And yes, a positive motion would require 50% if it were to be called. Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, for-
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay, now moving on to zoning map amendment, town and county overlay district change, portion of 13 Woodland, Woodland Drive. Uh, Mr. Maury.
Yes, so, um, I, I wanna be transparent in that I am not as well-versed as probably all of you on the other side of the table are about what is the impact of town and country overlay district, but I am of the understanding that R20 is a town district.
Correct.
And particularly where, um, where utilities are, um, are available, those properties should be in the town overlay and not the country overlay. And so, you know, it looks very clear from that map that everything to the north is town overlay and everything to the south is country overlay, but we have this odd scenario where Woodland Drive is in a town district. And it now is also serviced by water. Most of Woodland Drive is also in the sewer district, although not serviced by sewer. Those are essentially the criteria to determine whether a property should be in town or country overlay. If, if there are specific concerns that you all have or that neighbors have about making this property, which you've, um, very conditionally supported moving to R20, if there's concerns about it moving to the town overlay district as opposed to the country overlay, um, I'd like to hear them. You know, maybe there, maybe there are things that I can volunteer as restrictions. Um, I'm, I, I made this proposal because it was pointed out many times at the special town meeting that I didn't make the proposal. And, and it should, it, it should have been made. You know, this, this property, if it moves to R, this portion of the property, if it moves to R20, should be in the town overlay.
Yeah. Can I? Um, okay. This is, in mo, in a lot of cases, this is housekeeping, but in this case, I don't see it that way, you know? Let me just ask Megan a question. When we crafted VR, that was the alternative to R20, and that came in from Cisco, with all that R20 that went out to the beach. That's certainly not town. So here we are with this conversation about the way things used to be, nobody was thinking about any of these things in the sense of zoning districts versus areas, like ROH versus R1. Well, a lot of it kinda mixes together, but you don't have lug 1 after ROH. Well, in, in a lot of cases, we have anomaly areas that sort of were just the way they were, and it doesn't really make a difference if it's in country or town because of what's around it. I think this is one of those places that, because the rest of Woodland is not in the town district, and yet it's been R20 for 48 years or something like that. So, I think, in my opinion, is, you know, being around this now for 20 years, or a little more, God, um, is when we developed that line, for example, by Macy's Lane, where we could put that little piece in, that's town still. Like, we established boundaries more of a general, larger reasoning versus little pockets places. And in my opinion, if it's not, it's certainly not illegal to leave it, you know, in the sense of anything that's like conforming or not conforming. There's no, the, the country town is more of a town thing than it is a zoning thing. And we have thickly settled signs now and getting pulled over on roads that are lug 2. So I don't agree that this matters. I think we should leave it in the country and not create more confusion.
Well, I, I tend to agree with you that it probably doesn't matter. You know, it doesn't allow for greater or lesser density, or more or fewer bedrooms or any of those things. I was trying to bring it in keeping with how it's practiced everywhere else on the island and address concerns that neighbors raised last year, which is that I didn't propose this. So, so that's what it's for. It's not an attempt to get any, anything extra.
Right. It's, you're looking at it as a housekeeping issue, and it, that may be the case in some areas. In this area, I don't, I don't think so. So-
Barry?
I just wanna verify that with staff because that, that's maybe a little contrary to everything I've understood of you, you, again, again, we've been very deliberate about what's supposed to be in the town, what's supposed to be in the country at this point, and what does that mean and what zones fall underneath that. So, as much as, if there's an opportunity to address it, then I think we as a board need to be responsible for doing that, because if it's not today, it's gonna be eventually. So, I, I, I'd love to know what the rationale would be for addressing it, because it states it pretty clearly in our, in our, but I could be wrong. This is why I'm turning to staff.
It does, um, and, you know, it definitely aligns better with the town overlay. That said, the rest of Woodland Drive is not within the town overlay, and perhaps you should consider if this article were to pass by the voters at town meeting, to, to bring forth an article at special that addresses the entire neighborhood.
And, there you go. That would, that would even begin to make more sense to me at this point.
If we had more conversation and that were to be the direction, but instead of a one-off-
Right, because I, is, I mean, I'm gonna say this to Nat, because this is part of what we've been doing all along, is to clean up zoning pieces. There you go, I knew it.
I paused the first sigh.
I got it, I got it.
Lasted the-
There you go. Blame it on me tonight.
Hard time!
You gotta, you gotta give me a star, Dave?
Sorry.
Um, no, I get it, I get it. No, it's just, I, but again, there's gonna come a point where we need to address it. Staff is going to wanna address it, and that is commitments we've made from the previous master plan, and we're gonna do it again with this one. So, what took place in the past, we're trying to fix because there were, you know, again, we're suffering from a very open-ended part at times when zoning in the 70s was left very open-ended. And here we go. Let's try as a board to, if we have the opportunity, to address the issues that it befalls. I'm not, maybe not, but it really should, if it's not today, it should be somewhere in the very near future.
Yeah, and if I can-
And I have to rely upon staff.
No, yeah, and if I can maybe clarify, you know, I think some of the aspects of this would align with town overlay. I mean, there is not sewer that exists, there is not a pedestrian infrastructure that exists, there is not public transportation that services this area. So, you know, I think it could also be argued that perhaps country is, is more appropriate for this particular neighborhood. But I think approving a one law in an entire neighborhood would be inconsistent, was my point.
So, but there really should come a point where we need to-
To evaluate it.
Yeah.
We gotta zoom out.
Right.
Zoom out, right? That's what you're saying.
Yeah, I, it, again, this is, this is why I'm asking through staff about what's the best methodology to accomplish what really should be an end goal of this board. And it may be too, maybe too, that maybe there's, there has to be, I don't know, what it's gonna look like. But it's gonna be work with the neighborhood over time to understand what those dynamics are. I trust in staff to be able to guide us through that process.
I'm gonna quote Joe Biden, let's lower the temperature before we go there, okay? This, this is just making things confusing for people, okay? We have R20 and Quinney, I'm ad nauseam now, I'm bringing all this up, we have lug 1 in Squam, looks like two acre, but it isn't. This reminds me, Barry, and you were here longer than me, when we had the rural road alternative, remember that?
I remember a lot of things.
Okay.
I remember, I remember-
And Squam, the fight-
I remember corduroy roads.
The fight over Squam Road not getting improved, there's a deal now, it will never be improved, but at least you can still pass in certain spot. The, same with Millbrook, the fear of that becoming a, a public road, it's not gonna be. But there was a massive fear, they thought, people think it's gonna all of a sudden get paved and there's no say. I see this as something like that without a, a full, more scoped plan.
Okay.
When we found out we couldn't put the turning lane in because of that article in 97, 98, whatever it was, that no improvements can be made in the country, which is like insanity, but we voted for that.
I did.
Like 27 years ago, we thought it was a great idea. I certainly didn't, but other people did. So I just see this as sort of a separate conversation.
Okay.
It's just, we got Lover's Lane coming in, we've got, uh, Aqua Way's gonna have a bike path, Monahance is gonna have a bike path. So, you know, it's a lot of other moving parts besides just this one little parcel.
Yep.
Being compliant with whatever that is. That's crazy, in my opinion. We need to look at that as a separate issue. So, that's it.
I, we can go back and forth.
That was what I was saying.
We'll take this conversation outside.
Thank you. You guys get some coffee. Uh, Mr. Kilbert, please.
I, I, I agree that what, what is out there right now is, is in the country overlay district. Um, and why would you change this? Just to create one parcel in the, the town district when everything else out there is in the, in the country district? It just kinda confuses the issue. And what Mr. Maury's trying to do here involves a lot of changes, and we've been working with him on those. This just kinda creates an issue that really doesn't need to be an issue. That would be my recommendation, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilbert.
I, Mr. Chair, I agree with everybody who's spoken. I, I don't think there's a need to force this. You know, I put it forward because I, I thought it was bringing it in conformance with what the intent of the master plan was, but, but, uh, uh, of greater importance is bringing this property in conformance with its neighborhood. And those properties are R20, which is a town district, but also in the country overlay. And there's no reason that this property ought to be treated differently.
I, we understand why you're here and-
Yeah.
-what you're trying to do. So, I, we just gotta work on this a little further and more in depth. All right. Anyone else? Good.
Then I'll make a motion at this point, we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Barry, on your motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye.
I'm probably tempted to make a motion at this point that we take no action on this, which I think is the most prudent thing.
I agree.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, um, uh, no action. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is an aye. Okay, it's 5-0, okay.
Past three hours, you can just say chair.
No, I, this is all for Dave.
Okay.
It's my theater for Dave.
There you go.
Zoning map amendment, owes me a lot of dinners for sitting here. Town and county overlay district change, 13A to Woodland Drive, and a portion of 13 Woodland Drive. Mr. Maury, sir.
This is precisely the same issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So, uh, quantum two-thirds.
Right, and, look, that's what would be true for the last one as well.
If nobody from the public wants to speak?
No.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, second, Nat. Thank you, Barry. Nat, any motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye, Mr. Chair.
John?
Here's another dinner.
John?
Yes, Mr. Acting Chair.
Love you, John. And the acting chair is an aye.
I'm making motion to take no action.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Nat, any motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye, Mr. Chair.
John?
Here's another dinner.
John?
Yes, Mr. Acting Chair.
Love you, John. And the acting chair is an aye.
I'm making motion to take no action.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Nat, any motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye, Mr. Acting Chair.
Chairman Iverson?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
And acting chair is an aye. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, okay, so upcoming meeting, regular meeting is Monday, February 10th at 4 o'clock, and that is a hybrid. And then we will have another special meeting Thursday, March 6th at 4:00 PM, and that is remote only, so don't come in this frozen room, because no one will be here.
I do wanna mention for the meeting for the 6th, the, um, the primary intent of that meeting is to go over the comments, which are not subject to public hearing, that's for board discussion only. There are gonna be two public hearings, so we advertise that we need to deal with the 4181L article, we need to make a technical amendment to. Um, I've spoken with the article sponsor about that. I think it's just best practice to have the proper motion printed in the warrant to cause less confusion. So we'll be reopening that just to address, yeah, the, the technical amendment. And then I inadvertently left something off the agenda tonight, it's just addressing a technical change to our parking calculations as it relates to accessory dwelling units. So we'll have to schedule a hearing for that too on the 6th.
All right, you guys got a full docket, so.
Yeah.
We need that, we need that for-
No, I mean, staff, I mean, this is a problem.
Because the state will find something.
Yeah.